For roll call, please.
Here.
Councilmember Dorman?
Here.
Councilmember Mohler?
Here.
Vice Mayor Doran Becker?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the republic, one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next up, is there a motion to adopt today's budget workshop agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, is there a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any public comment on items not on the agenda today? Seeing none. Let's get to Budget Workshop number three.
Okay, great. Good afternoon and welcome to your final budget workshop before budget adoption. As you recall, we covered most of the general fund department budgets last meeting. The final department that needs to be covered today is Public Works. And then beyond that, we'll be talking with you about the Internal Service Funds. Our Capital Projects Fund will cover the water and wastewater funds and then summarize the town's debt as well. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Joe so he can cover the Public Works budget and numerous other budgets that occur this afternoon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure today to present to you our budget for the upcoming fiscal year. So the first thing we want to talk about is the overall budget for the Public Works admin group. That includes all of our municipal operations and the admin engineering group here in Town Hall. So we do have some budgets that are a little bit up and some that are a little bit down and we'll go through those individually. But I think what's important to note on this slide is that overall, we're basically flat at about a .4% increase. So despite all of the additions and some of the personnel increases, personnel cost increases, we managed to maintain a flat budget by reducing the budget in other areas. The next slide, goals and objectives. So a little bit about what we're planning on doing this year. We have seventeen capital improvement projects on the docket. It will include designing and construction of a pickleball court, some wastewater and water infrastructure, and more importantly, the planning for our implementation and use of the Measure T funds scheduled for 2018. We're looking forward to fully implementing our ASALA Asset Management Program and developing a facilities replacement program so that we can plan and program for our future facility CIP needs. Again, we're going to develop, this is a real planning year from us and a departure from what I and my staff have been involved in since I got here. And we're going to be planning a lot for the Measure T program. Part of the Measure T program requires us to do a five-year plan per the plan requirements. And we have to provide a budget for that as well. So we'll be working on that and we will be forwarding those documents on to the Napa Valley Transit Authority and they will have an oversight committee and we'll look forward to getting feedback from them so we can move on with Measure T. In the Public Works Administration Engineering Department, this is all general fund money, a 2% increase due to slightly increased personnel and permitting costs. You will notice on one of the line items, forty-two-ten, it's a $30,000 reduction. However, we really moved that to forty-two-eighty, other agencies with a slight increase, and that's a permitting cost. So it's a $33,000 line item. We didn't really add much to that budget, but there was a significant change in that line item. There is a slight decrease in number and scope of capital projects. Last year, we did on the order of thirty-five-ish, thirty-seven, I think, not including our replacement funds. And this year, we're down to about seventeen, as I said in the earlier discussion. We are going to have a significant reduction in our paving programs and budgets this year, and that's because we're going to be planning for Measure T so that we can really roll that program out and go strong when the funds are available in 2018 and 2019. Streets. Oh, any questions for forty-three-one, or would you just like me to go through this, Mayor, and you can ask questions at the end?
I think we'll ask questions at the end of each section.
Okay.
If there are any. If there aren't, we'll just keep going, so.
Perfect. Goals and objectives for the Streets Department. We are going to continue to do annual inspection of our storm drain system. That really is for compliance with our MPDES permit. Of course, the annual flood wall inspection and the documentation that's included with that project or program. We're going to continue to invest and do a more complete expanded use of GIS. We're really going to be using that to capture more assets and use it for the ASALA Asset Management Program, some new map layers for our internal and external use. And we found that the storyboards have been well received and we plan to use those in a more effective manner as well. Again, we're going to use ASALA Asset Management software with GIS, begin building that database. It's going to help us for reporting and budgeting. And we will also include incorporating a new equipment and facility replacement reserve program, which we'll discuss later in this presentation. We're going to continue to track and pursue training opportunities for our staff so that they can maintain the high professional, personal, and safety-related standards that we have come to be part of this department. And it's going to include a variety of peer, brand, professional organizations, conferences, online and onsite training. So all of the above. The budget is, this budget is reduced by 13%. And the significant amount came from the reduction of contract staff that we had here who supplemented town staff. However, with the new change with CALPERS and the common law employee classification issue, we're going to use this cost savings to cover the cost for the parks and facilities ground worker. And we'll discuss that further down into this part of the conversation, of the discussion. We're also going to continue with our urban forest management plan. This is the first three-year cycle, so we'll begin a new three-year cycle. The plan is to cover all the trees in town at least once every three years. So our tree service has them all mapped out. We touch, they touch and inspect every single tree within that three-year cycle. General, this is Public Works Department, forty-three-twenty, I'm sorry, parks, but still parks. So we're going to continue to maintain the path and park system at a high level. Again, GIS and ASALA are going to be used in a more effective manner and help us create some efficiencies and continue with the training as described before.
Joe, can you?
You're staying one slide behind on the screen.
I'm trying to advance you, but it's not letting me. There you go.
All right. How's that? Is that right? Yeah, you were just talking about forty-three-twenty. Okay. So this budget is increased by 10% or $55,386 in added personnel costs. This was for that, this was for that, we plan on doing is adding an additional grounds worker. This will take up for the staff person that we had on contract that was providing that service before this. And the second bullet point is reduction in contract services. Again, this was spread out, allocated out over the entire Public Works Municipal Operations budget. So that staff person from RGS showed up in most of the budget for this, for the Public Works Municipal Fund-funded departments. The restructure of our staffing will include increased personnel costs to maintain the current service level. However, outside of the staffing changes, the remainder of the operations budget is down slightly from this year. So outside of that cost, the budget is down slightly. And as I said, it's about .4% increase overall. The next item is government buildings, Department forty-three-twenty-five. So really, what we're trying to do with the facilities program this year is we're going to try to develop and refine the asset service life and replacement program. We're going to use ASALA to help us track that and manage it. And it's going to help us really drill down and get a good cost for replacement of all of our facilities with the life, service life included, so that we can then budget for the eventual replacement and refurbishment of those items. GIS, again, is going to be making this all possible. This program, ASALA, is fully GIS functional and we're going to be able to use that because we have captured a lot of the assets. However, some of the facility stuff is not all the way there, so we're going to continue to capture that. The tree maintenance program is included in our government buildings department, and that includes 105 trees. And of course, we're going to continue with their training as with the other departments.
Joe, why is it in the government building section and not in the park section?
Because we separated it out by the function of where those, that tree, the vegetation is. So those trees are on Town Hall property, Community Center, Community Hall property around the post office. So they are really around the facilities that are a part of that program. So we thought it would be better to budget it out of that. And then it wouldn't skew the other budgets of streets or parks because they're trying to maintain a facilities infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rohrler?
I know we've talked about it in the past because we've kind of questioned some of our arborists that we've had. Who are you using for your tree maintenance program?
So we have been using A+ since I have arrived here. The good thing about A+, there's several great things, but the really good thing is that every crew that comes out onsite with them has an arborist onsite. So when you see somebody trimming trees for the town with A+, there's always an arborist who is assigned to that crew. The other good thing about A+ is they provided, long before we had the ability to do this, they provided a map of each tree. So they have the species, they can tell you when we looked at it, they have a picture of the tree, they know that urban forest, and we can all access that program. It's in the cloud. So it's really a great tool for us. And the last part of that puzzle is when we're doing work for them, they're able to send us an estimate of the work and they have a picture of each tree, what they're going to do to that tree, how much that costs. So we can really pick and choose like a menu on what we're going to do based on our budget and what they really think we should do and what maybe could wait for a little while. So it's a great, it's been a great relationship with us and a great partnership for us. They treat us like we're a big client for them. And I don't, they have some rather large clients now and we still get the same service that we did when I first got here. So it's really great for us to be able to have a company that treats us like that, that values our business and then is able to provide the professional care for our urban forests that we need.
So if any tree issues come up with anybody in town, they can access those arborists too?
Yeah. So a great example was, we just transplanted these two trees from Community Hall. And they provided a guarantee for the trees when they transplanted them. And the tree out front is looking, it's struggling a little bit. So they came out and they're trying to give it a treatment and they're hoping that it can survive, but we'll see. But there was also a call from a citizen concerned about oak trees. So while they were here, they did a really thorough investigation of the neighborhoods and specifically the trees that that person mentioned. And they couldn't find any evidence of sudden oak death. And in their work here in the county, and they work throughout the county, they haven't noticed any sudden oak death. So they would have been surprised it was here in town, but that's just one of the services. It's almost like having an extension of staff. It's really a nice luxury.
It really is. And I want to bring the council back. Four years ago, you made a conscious effort to increase funding and we put a more systematic program in place, if you recall. Instead of us trying to do a little bit here, a little bit there, we went in and basically we're on a three-year cycle with A+. So every tree gets touched a minimum of once in this three-year cycle. And our staff is coordinating that. So it's been a real positive. And I also will just point out that this is a great example where we have a cost efficiency, improved service. You know, arborist talent is something we do not have onsite, in-house. This is one of those areas that is being challenged by AB 1250 in the contracting out, which would have very significant consequences to the town. But as Joe's pointed out, this has been now in our fourth year, in our second three-year cycle. So it's been a very positive experience for staff. And I think more importantly, our urban forest is cared better because we have a systematic program going forward.
Very good. Yes, Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you. Are we going to get into the actual numbers, or is this the time to ask if I have questions about specific numbers on these?
Anytime you'd like to ask a question about numbers, we're happy to answer them.
Well, that said, I'm going to start with a non-number. But so the urban forest management program you referenced in your narrative, that's in place by town ordinance or council policy or?
It's a council funding program. So it's a council policy direction that you funded in the program and we've maintained that. I will also point out, trees are a liability. So it's one of those things that we obviously have attempted to do a better job of maintaining them to reduce liability.
And then on the government buildings, I noticed there was, both in the narrative and a line item, about the energy resources conservation loan? Yes. What is that for? What did that fund? There were some retrofits that were done. And in order to fund those retrofits, we secured a loan. The payments of the loan are technically an offset to the savings in energy. And it's going to be paid off, I think, in like six or seven years. And that was my question, that if we wanted to put the funds there, it looked like to me if we went ahead and paid it off, we would save about $9,000 in interest. And I'm, I mean, I'm just asking, trying to clarify what we have loans for. That, I mean, based on the payment schedule, that would be true. But the interest is pretty reasonable. And it's really more about cash flow, I suppose, that that would be a council decision, you know, to make in terms of. But it was, our theory in taking the loan was principal and interest would be offset by our energy savings?
Correct. That was a more comprehensive program that the town entered into, Councilmember Dorman. And we did a variety of things. We did lighting renovation projects in the post office, the LED streetlight conversion. There were a number of things at that point in time throughout the town that we did cobbled under, it's a state structured program.
Called an ESCO program, I believe?
Correct. So, and then we did the initial renovation of lighting. So that was our big ticket item was the significant replacement of LED streetlights. And then internal, I believe we also did some air conditioning units. So the idea there is like taking old stuff and having them use more modern. So to the Finance Director's point, in the particular case, the interest is very low. The same way you'll see in another funding where, and I think we have three or four years left on our off-bill methane gas project refinancing with PG&E.
Okay. And then on the, back on the streets, and I'm sorry to go back, but I thought we would get another bite when we did the numbers. Are there any staff that are going from, that are directly linked going from a contract service to an employee on the streets?
Well.
On that part of the budget?
In the streets, no.
Go ahead, Joe. Let's have Joe. So what we did was, we, when I, before I got here, that person had been allocated out over several departments. So when we looked at how to budget for the grounds department, we started cobbling together that money. So we stripped that money out of the budget and used that budget savings in those departments to help fund the parks, the new grounds worker position. So we will not be adding staff to the streets department. However, that, as most of you know, we're so lean that most of our staff assist other departments on a regular basis. So that's kind of how it's going to be.
Okay. And then.
If that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. And then I'm just.
Before you go on, Steve, did you have anything further to add, or is that covered?
I think what I was just trying to make sure and Joe's answered, we funded the backfill position, which charged to multiple departments. And going forward in all reality, the new position, the facility and grounds workers is 100% funded in parks. So that's why you see a decrease in the other line item costs for contract services and then an increase in personnel costs that's solely borne in the parks maintenance.
But I think just to follow up that question, do we now add on health benefits and other full employee costs?
Yes, we do. And that's one of the things, when you've looked through here, we've done a really good job of, as many of you know, my model has been to try to contract out and use part-time staffing. And then if there's a, this was an area that had been working very well for us, with the exception of PERS's changes in their guidelines and their regulations that are making it not feasible for us to continue to use those. And again, the same comment, our contracting out for these is subject to challenge under AB 1250. So in order to do that, we've removed some other contract services, adjusted our service level. It's an entry-level grounds and facility worker, but it does have, as you pointed out, it will have the reform PERS program. We now have three levels of PERS employee benefits. And we have, under the prior council's direction, as you know, restructured our, we now have a co-share on employee medical and a reduced structure on OPAP. But yes, it will be a fully-loaded benefit position.
At an entry level, you said?
Correct. We have, we re.
That's good.
I was going to say.
Just to give it a sense of.
Well, I'm just saying, we have.
Level of the salary scale.
It's the lowest, right. It's below a maintenance worker.
Okay. Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you. And that segues to my, and this is kind of a general question that touches on a number of these categories, about AB 1250. And I have a number of questions. I'm going to ask them all and then maybe some of the answers overlap. Has there been a court case interpreting this, or is this just something that we're thinking it's going to go one way or another? Do we have some sort of an opinion from our attorney on which way it'll go? Is there a penalty if we, in good faith, continue to use contract positions and then it turns out they should have been treated as employees? And then to the mayor's question of, we look at this budget for this fiscal year, but we also then need to think about the ongoing costs of the loading. So kind of all that together. I just have an overall question on.
Broader question, I'll start with the PERS complications and the issues. We are a, we have a service relationship contract with PERS. And what I will say is, PERS does compliance audits and PERS has made it very clear to their members that they are going to be looking for these specific things. And if they do find them, we're subject to fines. We're also subject to increased penalties and provisions. So from a professional, ethical, practical standpoint, it's not something in good faith I can continue to look at doing when we know that we have potential structures that need to be brought in. However, having said that, that's also why we've looked at the total budget going forward, to make sure that the incremental position growth is something that we can build in and support in the base. So I will say yes to that. But again, it's the change in the mechanism we're doing is a result of the PERS. AB 1250 is not law yet, so I'm hopeful that we have an opportunity to influence and encourage legislators that it's a bad thing. But the PERS situation is current. It's in front of us. I am aware of other agencies that are in the process of an audit and the consequences of that.
So if the, if AB 12 does not pass as it's currently before the legislature, will the PERS, will the complexion of what PERS is expected to change?
No, PERS is current. AB 1250 is just an even more gracious reduction. Right now, under PERS guidelines, there are certain things that we can still contract for. And we have quite a few of those in the budget, which I can go through. But PERS is making it more challenging to employ what they consider common law employees. And for us, a great example, that while we were contracting with a firm, we were using vacation, backfill, and work scheduling. And they're going to, PERS would likely be to determine that you're managing and directing the content. There's not a specific project. Therefore, it's a common law employee and should be an employee rather than a contracted. So that's what's driving most all of our changes right now, are a result of that because of the way we choose to manage and organize them. AB 1250 could be a greater onslaught to, for example, we contract out for street sweeping rather than have our own additional maintenance worker and a street sweeper or two. We contract for plan check. We contract for building inspection. Under AB 1250, all of those would be subject to us having to convert all of them to employees. So that's why I say the two. But the PERS issue right now is defined mostly for us to the common law situation. We're still able to use annuance on a project basis and structure. But again, it's something we have to be very cautious about when we're using contracted sources. So for our purposes, for the budget, what we're cleaning up are two situations where we felt that we had exposure to a potential PERS audit that we would potentially fail the common law test.
And then this is a question for Joe. Will there be increased compliance costs with the new NPDES permit?
There will be. I think I, it was $3,000. So it went from $30,000 to $33,000.
So minimal, as the years go by. Thank you.
Okay. If we can move forward. Do you have more on government buildings?
So government buildings, as we discussed, the budget is flat to slightly lower. There's a bit of a change in decreased cost for equipment less than $10,000. We reduced that by $4,900. It still left, it leaves us enough to cover costs for the purchase of small tools and equipment. And then as we discussed earlier, a loan from the State of California Energy Resources Conservation Development Commission, and that was for an ESCO contract. And we're paying that off on a timely, in a timely manner. Special revenue funds. So these funds are outside of the, this particular group of funds is gas tax, so not general fund money. I think the, these projects have been projects that have been in our CIP program for several years, mostly funded by gas tax. However, the gas tax has been diminishing over the past several years and to the point where it was becoming almost not an effective method of being able to program anything with the minimal amount of funds. However, with the advent of SB1, and it looks like it's going to, it has passed, but, and hopefully it survives the legal challenge that it's currently in, we will be able to supplement the gas tax funds significantly. And when they're in full force, it's going to double, about, just about double the current gas fund tax budget. So this year, looks forward a little bit to getting some of those revenues. In the last quarter of this year, we should get somewhere in the course of about $17,000 in addition to what we had been planning on. So that's what this budget reflects for our surveys and monuments books, for our traffic calming program, and for our curb gutter and sidewalk replacement. Another one of our special revenue funds is the Flood Barrier Capital Maintenance Fund. So this is a fund that we budget for out of a general fund. We do have a $10,000 line item for this. However, should we not need that, then the fund balance just goes back into the general fund. Basically, what we do with the flood barrier each year is we do an inspection and we also go through the evolution of putting up the flood walls at the front of each entrance to make sure that all of our crews are trained and up to speed on how those go in and how everything fits together. And we do that typically in the fall of each year. I should also say that this has been funded, this fund is also supplemented by Measure A. And should we have an excess fund balance in Measure A funds, then I think we will, I think the plan is to use the excess of any Measure A money to help fund the flood wall future maintenance requirements.
So I just want to clarify briefly, that Fund 76 is not a general fund department?
Oh, it's not?
No. It's, you've got some reserve funds in its own fund balance of about 169. You'll see it in the financial page that comes with the narrative. And the fund was established when we did the mitigation, when we got the mitigation grant. We left the reserve funds in there so that we could continue to meet the maintenance of effort requirements. So then the $10,000 is budgeted, and if it isn't used, it just rolls back into its own fund balance. But it's separate money altogether. And it's got a little healthy fund balance in there. If Measure A funds come in, we can put those in there as well, make sure that they're accounted for together but separately so we can report as required if necessary through FEMA or Napa County at another time. But I just want to make sure you know it's not general fund money.
Thank you.
And just before you leave, Measure A related, if you remember, we did our large flood mitigation project last year. We are advancing from our Capital Projects Fund. So Measure A is reimbursing. And as the Public Works Director has indicated, our objective as we reach closeout. And as the Public Works Director has indicated, our objective as we reach closeout will be any remaining fund balance in Measure A. We will move into this, retitle the program so that it can be a maintenance fund for any Measure A-funded project. So, it'll be a small reserve utilizing the balance. We do not have, nor will we have another Measure A-funded project. So, we're simply paying ourselves back. We'll do a cost accounting. I should want, I should point out, this is the final flood wall payment, and this debt will be paid off in this fiscal year. So, whatever balance in a couple hundred thousand will go into the maintenance fund.
So, any additional costs from that balance are totally at the discretion of the town? There's no longer any oversight at the county level, correct?
No, I can't quite agree with that statement, yeah. Measure A, but the one thing, Mayor, and that's why we've been working on what we believe will be a very easy resolution, because how we choose to do the closeout will be subject to the oversight of the Measure A committee. We feel it's gonna be very hard for them to argue against us having a maintenance fund to pay for the very things that we use Measure A to pay for. And in brief conversations with county staff, that's, they seem very comfortable with what we're proposing.
Okay, good. Inter, next up is internal-
Just before we go on to that, any follow-up questions on general government public works? Okay? Now? We have no time limits, one way or the other.
Internal service funds, so we, as we said early, as I said earlier in the discussion, we do have some replacement funds, and we're trying to plan better for the use of those replacement funds. And for several years, for the time I've been here, we have always had a replacement fund for facilities, for parks, for paths, for a variety of facilities and infrastructure in the town. However, we never really had an account that we put those funds into that could build that account balance. This year, Fund 81 represents the Facilities Repair and Replacement Fund. So, we established it this year. It's to fund, to allocate funding and develop the reserve fund to cover current and future facility repair and replacement needs. So, when we come to you next year, or in years in the future, our hope would be that whatever we're asking to fund in terms of a facility repair and replacement, we'll be able to draw out of Fund 81 to fund that CIP project. Is that kinda clear?
Yep.
Yes, it's, in theory, it's clear. My question is, do we have a strategy about how much money we really need in there to make a difference? When you talk about CIP projects, those are not typically small dollar projects.
Right. So, that was what I was talking about earlier, in using our Acela Asset Management Program and using, and working with the Facilities Group to get a better idea of exactly what the facility needs are, what the service life of those needs are in the facilities, and then develop a replacement fund based on those specific needs. We don't have a really great picture. We have a good picture, but we need to refine that to get a better idea of what we need to put in there every year to fully fund the project.
Some of our special reserves and other funds, we have percentages that we look to maintain.
Correct. So, this will be based on using, as the Public Works Director indicated, basically, we will be able to catalog, have a list of assets, a known price, a service life, and do some extrapolation. It may not be perfect, but it should get us towards putting, you know, a reasonable amount of money. So, when that particular case in point, the community center built in 2009, roof, roof has 30-year life expectancy, how much should we put in to be able to pay cash? So, one of the other things that I will point out is, this, if you think about it, we're getting to be a little bit more sophisticated with our capital projects replacement funding. In most cases, we just used Project Fund 50 as a catch-all, and we would put projects in when they were needed and draw down. So, what we're attempting to do is be more strategic. So, we're gonna build fund base, have a bank account, draw down. So, it's gonna reduce some of our dependence on Fund 50, so we won't need to put as much money going forward. And also, the timing as well, we're being more strategic. Measure T is going to be coming in from a transportation. So, your capital projects funding tools, if you are, you're gonna see several different buckets that we're going to be using, and then building the revenue base up form rather than one big catch-all. Because you may recall, and this is something I think we learned with Measure A, we used to bring the Measure A money and put it into a project and capital, and we're in Fund 50. Now, we're just being much cleaner and more discreet with the funding structure and the funding source.
But we also have a schedule, is this anticipated, a schedule of what repairs, replacements we're gonna need over the five-year or whatever timeline?
That's our plan, Mayor. That's the best way for us to be able to budget, is to actually have a schedule of replacements in the years that those schedules of replacement should occur, and then we'll back into the number via that program or that spreadsheet.
So, no pressure at all on you getting this up and running, this Acela program this year?
Well, I think we'll be okay.
Councilor Mueller?
I just wanted to make a comment. I think this is a very smart thing that we're doing, especially for future councils that don't have these really kind of big proof surprises or something. I think this is very prudent budgeting, and I'm really glad we're at least starting it now. So, and we have these software tools to do. I think this is very important to do.
The other thing I will remind the council is, we occasionally, in December or January, will have a conversation about unassigned fund balance. So, when we look at if we have, and I won't steal the Finance Director's thunder, because we anticipate there will be some, these now become possible options for us to look at to help us get a little bit of a jumpstart from where we may be behind on. Because we won't be needing, just like we started slow to build up our OPEB trust fund, and now we have that almost approaching 80% funded.
But I think more importantly, as we kind of move forward, if we really are near build-out, if we really, the TOT really does flatten out, this is where this is going to be worth this weight and goal, with no pun intended.
We're putting good systems in place that will allow us to be on top of things better.
I mean, what we're trying to avoid is a surprise of, oh, we, something needs a paint job that's $30,000, when we should've been able to budget for that had we had a program that helped us identify when that might be. So, that's what we're trying to do.
Councilor Dorman?
Thank you. So, when we say capital maintenance, what do we mean by that?
By law, it's over $10,000. Anything that exceeds $10,000.
And then, PK 6018, which is $15,000 for the pool, swimming pool replacement program, is that all that we'll be spending on the pool for this next fiscal year?
I'm sorry, which item?
Sorry, it's on page three of three, and it's the last item, PK 6018, swimming pool replacement program? It's Fund 81, Joe.
All right.
Just helping out there.
That's all right.
Fund 81, Department 6000.
That's correct. So, that's for next year. So, that will go into, that will go into the fund balance, to build fund balance. So, we don't have any plans to do any work at the pool next year, so that will be the beginning of a building of fund balance. We've spent probably close to $150,000 in the last two years on the pool with the pool deck, some pump upgrades, and some other additional improvements that we've made. So, this will help begin to build that fund balance so that we can then use that fund balance to draw down when we have to do that work again.
Perfect. And the same thing for the item right above it, PK 4018, park service replacement. This is just building for when we do need it?
That's correct.
We'll have a reserve.
That's correct.
Thank you.
There probably hasn't been a year when the swimming pool has not had unanticipated maintenance.
In my time here, that has been true, Mayor. Some of it, we've been able to cover under the maintenance budget, when it's a pump or something that goes bad, but some of those pumps tend to be kind of spendy, and it doesn't take much to get up over that $10,000 limit, and that's kind of where, then we get into the capital replacement.
And as Councilmember Durham is waiting to say, these are not factored into the general funds level of subsidy.
Okay.
So, Fund 82 is the, is the version of, the second part of this program, which is Fleet, Tools and Equipment Replacement Fund. So, those items that are part of our fleet, tools above $10,000 and equipment would fall under this. So, this year, for instance, we're buying a three-quarter ton truck for about $50,000. That would, hopefully, at some point, this account will be large enough that we can just draw from this account to replace those trucks and other pieces of equipment that have a definite service life.
Are we looking at alternative fuel options with future fleet, or is it not affordable and available yet?
Well, both of those things are true. We were, we bought a hybrid vehicle for, for the Parks, Parks and Rec Department this year. As far as our fleet, the heavier equipment, we don't have enough of a fleet to get much of an offset, and the technology just quite isn't there for us to make it as affordable as a internal, as a regular combustion gas or diesel vehicle.
And are you already looking at the impacts to this or other departments if AB 1250 does in fact go through, and we now have to figure out how are we gonna afford a street sweeper and other heavy equipment?
That would be a curveball that we have, would have to try to budget for.
Well, so, part of the 81 and 82, right, is to develop cash flow demand, and probably at some point, come back to you and sort of let you know what the asset inventory looks like, what the cash flow demand would be. You can do one of those on an annual basis when you cost things out. Also, you know, the town is in a really good fiscal position, so while it's always really nice to pay for things in cash, it's really important to remember that it's valuable to finance things for multiple reasons. And so, I think, should something like that come up, we'd be really well positioned to finance something if we needed to. So, I just wanna remind you, you guys are in really great shape, and we've got options.
Okay.
But I'll also remind you slightly differently, that I don't know that, you know, we'd be looking at some wholesale changes in restructuring and our service delivery, and I'm not comfortable at all in saying that we could maintain the same service delivery model we have in place now, standards and everything, for the same dollar amount of our budget. I think we would have some major restructuring that we would have to do, which could result in either service delivery changes in those areas, or certain things being done at a very different level than they're currently done. Because our revenue stream, while strong, as several of you have pointed out, we are plateauing. And I've also shared with some of you that, you know, we do have to pay attention to the GAN limit, and we're getting awfully close. So, it's going to be time again for us to go back out. So, we, we're very tight on the GAN limit. So, being able to go spend another $600,000 on different things could be challenging on both, do we have the annual revenue to do it, and will it put it in, you know, compliance or not compliance with the GAN limit?
That a reminder, that's a very good problem to have.
Yes.
Bringing in more revenue than we're so far allowed to use.
It's our, it's all on the original, and it dates back to the 70s, which unfortunately for us, for our baseline, is not a strong baseline. But the Finance Director will be including an overview of the GAN limit in the, in the budget document. But it's a good thing that we're coming up on our need. We will, we will need to go in for a rather robust adjustment.
Joe, do you have more on this fund? That covers it, most of the questions. Council, Councilmember, really? No questions? Wow. Councilmember Durham?
One quick one, good. You state here in Fund 82 that there's 30 pieces of equipment. So, therefore, is it, the fund is gonna try to cover over 30 pieces?
Correct.
Okay, cool.
That's correct.
I just wanted to understand that. Thank you.
That's what we're doing now out of the general fund, so we would hope that we're gonna be able to fund that and then pull it out of Fund 82.
Any other questions on internal service funds? Okay, let's move forward to Capital Projects Fund.
Capital Projects Fund, here we go. So, this year for the Capital Projects Fund, we're roughly about $727,000. That is down significantly from last year. The big item this year is in Parks and Recreation. Again, that, even that is down significantly from in years past. And let's have a look at the projects. So, civic facilities projects, the council chamber improvements are going to be finished, hopefully, very early in the fiscal year. We're getting some great quotes, and we have the design nailed down, so hopefully, while we're off and having a couple of weeks in between council meetings, we can get that finished. The curtain wall at the community hall is gonna replace some of the curtains that are, have reached into their service life. The same is true with the security cameras in and around the facilities. So, this isn't a wholesale replacement of all the cameras. This is replacing and updating the cameras that are no longer operational and part of the hardware system as well, and then, and then replacing other cameras as they're needed. But this will basically get the system back up and running, which it needs to be around the facilities, all of our facilities. And then, we're gonna paint the post office in Sherrick's Annex. It's been several years since that's been done.
I have a question.
Hi, Mayor, question?
Yes, I'd like to know how many cameras are mounted now in the, around the area?
I think we have 33, and that's total in town. So, that's spread out between Town Hall, Community Center, Community Hall, and the courtyard.
Thank you.
Community projects, drainage, flood control projects, Parks and Recreation projects. So, I think the one notable thing about this slide is, this was four slides in previous years. That's how much we have reduced the CIP program.
Bravo.
GIS, ADA accessibility are features that have been on this CIP for many years, as is townwide drainage. The two new additions, the Vineyard Park Outdoor Exercise Equipment, the Vineyard Park Outdoor Exercise Equipment and the pickleball court improvements are the majority and the largest projects for us this year, at just over $220,000.
Wow. Streets and transportation. Sure hope the residents keep playing pickleball.
And then, so, quick question on that, and I don't know if it's Joe or Steve. So, for that outdoor court, that's open to anybody to participate, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, very good.
That is correct. Just like the, I would say the bocce courts may be an example of open to the public, even if a club is using them, there may be some dedicated reservation time for a club, but other than that, it's available to the general public.
And actually, I'd say there's even a stronger difference. The pickleball is actually organized and run through the Park and Rec Department, whereas the bocce club has an affiliation and a little bit of funding that they put into. So, but similar in the sense that the public is available to generally use the facilities when they're not programmed.
But they, the pickleball will still duel, is also dual tennis court with the stripe beat.
That's correct. The tennis court will not go away, so what this will do is that, will add, we're still trying to nail down the design, one or two pure pickleball courts, one court that's gonna be a mixed, meaning it's gonna be lined for both pickleball and tennis, and then one pure set of tennis courts.
All right.
So, kind of with the setup they have now with the addition of a pure pickleball playing area. Streets and transportation?
Hold on just a second.
Sorry, before you-
Dorman?
Thank you. Before you go on, Joe, the $35,000 for additional chamber, council chamber improvements, what are the additional improvements that need to be made?
So, those improvements are, this current setup that we have here is going to be a more permanent setup, and it's gonna look more like what you all have there. So, it's gonna be a lower set of workspaces with a permanent station for our town clerk and for whichever staff member's presenting, and then a similar setup for where the town manager and the town attorney would be sitting, and then staff would be-
Let me also clarify, this is a continuation, because the project, so the funding's already in this year's budget, and we're moving it in in case it's not concluded by the close of the fiscal year.
All the project has been approved already?
Correct. So, this is one where we haven't expended it, so it's to make sure we have the funding capacity. We may be, and then we also have the modifications, electronics and mixers and monitors are coming out of the restricted peg funds.
Peg funds, that's the sound, the audio and digital.
Those are all planned, these are just making sure that the funding is still in place for next year.
So, the project has been approved by a previous council, and a dollar figure has been approved by a previous council?
It's in the current budget, for example, that it may not be drawn down, so we're moving-
But the answer is yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it's just that the money has not been drawn down? It's already been approved or what is moving?
Parts of the project have not been completed, so the money has been moved forward.
And we may be, I will also point out that if we're successful in getting contracts and a few things lined up, we may be able to have most of the project paid for in this year's current expenditures, and therefore, that particular project wouldn't be funded next year, and the funding would return to- next year, and the funding would return to Fund fifty balance. It's just a stopgap measure, because if we finish the year, we have very strict, the manager has very strict rules for how encumbrances are applied, so we're very close to knowing if we're going to be able to fund this, or whether it's going to have to be funded out of next fiscal year.
Here's what I would say. We anticipated that this was going to be a much more expensive and longer-term project. However, after getting in the contractor who did this original work, who still is here in town, and he had the cabinet maker who did this original work still working and in town, we were able to get a price that is allowing us to complete the work on this year's budget, and we don't anticipate that we're going to need next year's budget to do the work.
Okay, and then CP 007, which is our GIS, is that just a recurring annual expense that we put in, and it'll be about the same from now on?
I think so, and it's one of those that we've reached sort of a spot where we tweak what the focus that we have with our staff work on. So it could go down a little bit, and then we'll look at it, but, you know, that's another example of our contracting out services with the city of Rancho Cucamonga for staff and support work. So right now, I would say it's more of an annual budget allocation based on what we've actually used the last several years. So that is a reduced amount, because you may recall, a couple of years ago, we were in the $100,000 a year program, so it's also reaching...
So does that really belong in here? Because this is pretty much for one-time projects instead of ongoing costs?
Here's what I would say. We keep bringing new elements to the GIS, so it's probably one of those areas you could make an argument a couple of different ways, and for GAN limit reasons, I'm going to keep it here.
Okay, that's fine. And then CP 2016 through 18, which is the ADA accessibility improvements, is this also something that we just fund on an ongoing basis? We always have a placeholder for...
Yes, we're required to make these improvements. We have a twelve-year program. The council approved our self-evaluation and transition program, I believe, 2015. So this will help us continue to make those improvements over the next ten or twelve years.
Councilmember Dormand, we're referring to that, so there's a priority list of projects that we've roughly targeted over twelve years, and each year, staff pulls and sees what we can get off on those and works towards that. We're probably due for maybe a fall or a winter update on where we are with that current progress, just to keep it in front. And then the other thing that you may or may not recall, but when we get into some of our streets and roads projects, if it's a maintenance or new, we now have to bring all the curbs and curb cuts up to ADA standards if we go in and do a paving project. So it's a couple of things that we can pull into it.
We also use it for part of our parks programs over the past couple of years as well. So when we had ADA improvements and we needed to augment the budget a little bit, the ADA accessibility kind of helped fill some of those gaps. So definitely helps us with some of our paving programs. It has helped us with some of our parks programs, but going forward, it's really going to help with that list of projects that are needing to be done, as identified in our self-evaluation and transition program.
Thank you. And ST 4016, which is the traffic calming for $30,000. Excuse me, I noticed that, I don't, it looks like we haven't done that in a few years. Is that just something we put in every so often, or do we have specific projects in mind?
We did have specific projects, but now we use it to, when we identify projects that need, that are needed, then we can use it. For instance, we're planning on installing rumble strips at the end of Finell at Town Limits, so it's those type of projects that help us fill in that gap and provide funding for those kinds of things.
And do you see that kind of as an ongoing, again, placeholder?
We do.
Okay. And then on the pickleball courts, I noticed in your narrative, you noted that as a top priority. And we have received emails from a couple of citizens, one talking, a couple of them talking about a possible dog park, and one of the suggested places was where, or about where I understand the proposed pickleball courts will be. We also had an inquiry about whether we could work with the Veterans Home to do a path. We also had Peter Kagayama come and talk about doing things that are fun and things that are different. I'm just wondering, as we look at this, because as I understand, some of the money will go to resurface our tennis courts, but the majority of the $200,000 is for the construction of the new courts. So I'm wondering if this is a time to think about whether spending that money on pickleball courts, whether that decision should be made now, or whether that should be, that we have that money and it can be done for, it can be used for a community project or projects, and what those projects should be.
Well, first of all, I would say...
I don't know when to bring that up.
Your council, the budget is your council priority decision. I will point out that the projects have come out of Parks and Rec Advisory Commission. Dog park comes up every four to five years for discussion, and if you were to look at doing a dog park, I would suggest that you do a very similar process, where you put it back and start with the Park and Rec Advisory. If you are looking at funding it or something you want to do, certainly on a pilot program, we would need to, you know, it's a modest amount of money if we were to do something, and we could probably find that. But ultimately, you know, you're talking about a program that's been vetted by your Park and Rec Advisory Committee, and there may be capacity to move it back and adjust and accomplish both the dog park pilot and the expansion, but I do think you would need to send some of that back, or else provide policy direction on what you want to do. I'm going to suggest that you go sled, tread a little more, slightly, with the funding request for the pathway, because there's a lot of things, while it sounds really easy to say, yes, let's support something, I think there's a lot of understanding that you need to do, which is, one, does the town have jurisdiction to build and put an improvement on state-owned property, liability issues, and all those other things. So I think there's more conversation that needs to occur on that, including the fact that there is an existing pathway. Is it utilized? Is the, could there be some things done? Could we potentially augment the golf course pathway? So I think the broader question to what one gentleman brought up would be, what is out there? What's the true need? Because again, that's state responsibility, and we've brought, the town has done a really good job of all of our facilities to the boundary, are ADA compliant and support. I also want to remind everybody that we provide the trolley to provide for accessibility and connection. So that's a more challenging capital project for me in terms of how, what, I have no idea how to even evaluate what the cost would be, or whether I can, could do it. So that would be the first thing on that. Obviously, if you have an interest in a project, I think you need to be sending some of those and providing feedback to go back to the appropriate Park and Rec Advisory Commission.
Yeah, we have a process in place. It's, you know, one person sending an email with an idea they came up with doesn't mean that we should find a spot in the budget for it. This idea about a path at the Veterans Home, we have no jurisdiction there. Calvet is already in to an extensive facility review. We don't know if that path or any other path is going to be modified based on their ideas of how they're going to potentially change their property. So it's quite presumptive for the town to take a position on a project on property that we have no control over. And the dog park conversation has come up for at least ten years, and it has been thoroughly vetted, and in no part of the town has there been identified a space where it's practical or welcome. There's always something wrong with every site. We have taken caravans of residents around to every open space in town and evaluated them, including the tennis court pickleball area, and everyone that lives in that area says no to the dog park. So that's one of the reasons that that was, that conversation stopped several years ago. Literally every open space in town has been evaluated, and we drove to those sites, and there was always resistance based on the residents that lived there. That's principally the issue. The only other spot that seemed the most reasonable was south of Veterans Memorial Park, which is the area now that has been discussed as a parking lot. But even those that were most adamantly in support of a dog park didn't want it to be there near the highway, because they didn't want it to be noisy. So that conversation has happened for many, many years. I don't know that there's any new development that makes it more feasible now than it used to be. So that's some background on the dog park conversation.
Can I add just one?
Hold on just a second. Councilmember Mueller?
On a similar train of thought, but on a different topic, we hear that strategic plan and these general plan meetings about using the open space by the Napa Valley Museum for a parking lot. So just for everyone's information, that big open space that everyone's talking about that goes from adjacent to the museum all the way down to Henman Creek is, has a thirty year plus with a thirty-year renewable lease to the Napa Valley Museum. We do not own that land. We would have to go through multiple layers of discussing it with the museum and the Veterans Home and the state to ever do that. So just kind of as an FYI, this is not something that would at all be just an easy fix to pave over somebody else's subleased land. So just to be clear about that. And then, I have one more question, but let's, it seems like everyone wanted to make a comment.
Sorry, I just wanted to make one comment on the dog park as well. I was the chair of the Parks Commission when we took those caravan people out and we had those discussions back then. I do, the budget, as town manager said, I don't think we need to figure it all out now, but I do think it's worth having a conversation again, because as I remember, the Parks Commission did come up with some ideas for it. And if I remember correctly, it was the council that voted down any sort of funding for it. So at the very least, I would like to at least put it out there, that I'd like to have that discussion, policy discussion, again, with the Parks and Rec's department, excuse me, the Parks Advisory Commission, thank you. So I just want to put that out there.
And to follow up on that, and then we'll go back to Councilmember Mueller, there was a council decision to remove it from the budget, because it looked as if there was funding for a dog park every year. And some residents said, why are you not building it? And we said, because that money is just a placeholder if anything ever were to evolve, and the council determined it was misleading to keep it in the budget.
The suggestion that I would offer the council would be that if you want to revisit the community discussion of the dog park, which, A, doesn't surprise me, because you have new people, new interests, one, we can start the conversation, you do have a process and a place to do that, if that's the council's prerogative. I think the mayor has outlined the budget situation also as to Councilmember Durham. Part of the challenge, and I think the mayor alluded to a little bit, is the dog park advocates kind of had disagreements amongst what they would consider acceptable or not, and that also helped to make it very challenging to come up with a location, because none of the locations were acceptable to a majority. So maybe there's a different approach, but again, that would be a council policy direction. I will point out, the Capital Projects Fund has a sufficient balance, that if you were to come back and decide that that was something you want to do, I believe you would be able, especially on a demonstration project or a pilot, be able to look at.
Well, the point is that the process doesn't start with putting money in the budget without even having a concept for cost, design, you know, the feasibility. You know, we have ideas that are being thrown out by email, and that's fine, we always welcome the ideas. They have a process they can go through. Park and Rec Department, the Advisory Commission is a perfect example of that. Public Works, if there's a pathway project a resident would like us to consider, they can go through the Public Works Department and vet that. But they should certainly start with the property owner, which is the, you know, California Department of Veterans Affairs, if they want to talk about what to do with the pathway system at the Veterans Home.
There may be something, if I could offer the council, that we might be able to do in a spirit of cooperation, which is, if we have resident concerns, and again, I've only heard from one, and I'd like to better understand what the issue is, perhaps then we could advocate if they need help in the California state budget with our local senator and assembly member, that the home be given an adequate budget to maintain that issue. That certainly would be something we might be able to work towards to address the situation.
I'm just going to reemphasize, I am, you know, I'm not interested in us meddling in what the Veterans Home Administration and the Calvet Administration are doing at the Veterans Home property. So we need to be very careful about what role we are considering or not considering taking, just as if Calvet was telling us what to do in the town. We need to be very careful about how far we reach. So again, there is a process that can be followed if somebody has ideas.
And I agree, and I understand that there is a process and a procedure, and that we have limited jurisdiction. I get all that. My only reason for bringing this up was because it is a large sum of money, $180-some-a-thousand that I wanted to open a discussion about whether or not it should all be used for pickleball courts, or whether or not, given the current situation, whether it comes via email or it comes via process, there are other things that we might want to hear our residents on about how that money could be spent. It's not that I don't understand the process, I'm just opening a conversation, could we put something in the budget that says $180,000 for community projects to be determined? And maybe it ends up being a pickleball court, maybe it doesn't. That was my only point in raising it now.
That's where Mueller, on this topic or a new one? Because if it's a new topic, Vice Mayor, I think is going to bring up...
I can wait.
Vice Mayor?
Can I just clarify one thing, please?
Yes.
This was several moments ago, and I just want to clarify. ST 4016, you received an updated printed sheet of Fund fifty, and Councilmember Dormand, I think you asked about it, but that was a correction to the budget issued on Friday, and actually, $30,000 is not budgeted in seventeen eighteen. I just want to make sure you knew that.
Oh, for traffic calming?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's not in...
Sorry, I did not realize this was an update.
It's okay, I just wanted to, just for purposes of record and publicly, so you make sure you've got the right information.
It's in the gas tax fund, GT.
Ah, yes, it's just not here.
Right.
Yeah, it's not in Fund fifty.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm looking at the Parks and Rec Fund fifty figures, and I thought I heard you, Joe, say that there was a 24% increase in that budget, but it doesn't look like it.
No, I did not say that, I'm sorry.
Okay. I misheard that.
Actually, I said I think that those budgets overall are decreased significantly, all of the budgets across the board.
They look, that's like it to me.
I think you said a .4 increase.
Oh, that's, that was in our, in the operations side.
Okay.
In the operations side. I think that budget went up 10%.
And so the only...
The Parks Maintenance Budget went up 10%.
The only, the only things proposed are for the pickleball court and for the utility exercise equipment.
That's correct. That's correct.
So I think it, .4 sounded like 24.
I guess that must have been it. Thank you.
Yeah, so just those two projects, that's correct, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Mueller?
Okay, I think this question is for Maria. So one of the things that we touched on unofficially at our last Waste Management meeting, and it has come up before, so I think we'll probably be having a more formal discussion, although it's not official, is a franchise fee on our Waste Management Service. Now typically, the rationale is because of the wear and tear of three trucks, three big heavy trucks, every week on the streets. So my question, since we are on streets and transportation, if we were to bring back and have that council discussion for their direction that we look into it further, would that be a, go into general fund money, or does it go into actually these streets and transportation? Do you know, or is that a question?
Well, my recommendation would be that it go into streets and transportation, where we maintain our streets, so that we could see a direct impact if we were to collect a franchise fee from there. Some local governments put it straight into the general fund, because they fund their capital projects fund, much like we do here, but ultimately, you could have a discussion about that and direct it, either which way.
Okay, thanks.
So to circle back on Councilmember Dormand's request for consideration of, I guess I may need clarity on what your idea is, if of the $200,000 that's proposed in the budget for the pickleball development, of that 200, 180 would be undesignated? Or are you talking about a new 180 you want designated to miscellaneous community activities?
I would... I would want whatever the delta is between the 200,000 and the restriping of the tennis courts to be undesignated for community projects, not an additional 180. And I'm just pulling 180 because that's what I think.
Can I give you all some background on this?
Sure.
Because I think you may be creating something a little more challenging. One, the courts are already restripped. So, the issue that we're talking about is the construction of the new court facilities and the alignment of all of them to end up with the same. So, we're not talking the 20,000 delta. You're talking about the project. I also want to give you a little bit of history. This project has gone through and came out of the recommendation along with several things out of your Park and Recreation Advisory Commission. So, that's where they started, and it's not that we start with a, it's not that we start with a dollar amount. They kind of coalesce community input and do some of the research. To bring you back, so if you were to have a broader discussion, right now, you're sitting with approximately a million dollars in the Capital Projects Fund 50, likely to grow to a million four when we see complete repayment of the Measure A flood. So, the reason I say that's important to the council is if you wanted to come up with another project, say a dog park, say something else, you have a funding source to go to for it. It wasn't that we were, you know, we try not to, and I'm going to stress, we try very hard not to put budgets in without a reason. So, if you want to start, what I would encourage you to do is you have the community conversation this year to develop, flush out, we do some research on something, and then if we know what we want to pay for, we fund it next year. So, that's what we try to do from a, from a planning standpoint. So, the two projects, the playground equipment, as some of the council may remember, that actually took two and a half years. We started with, were we going to have a replacement fitness center? And then we came to the conclusion, well, that really doesn't fit our business model. And then what could we do? And was there some interest? And we actually did a survey, and the Park and Rec Advisory Commission came back and said, "There's enough people interested in this." They did some research, and it's worked its way through. Now, at this level, the council can say no to any of the recommendations on the projects or, you know, indicate an interest. But I want to let you know that you're not stopping another project from coming forward with the balance that you have in the Capital Projects Fund. So, if, you know, if you were interested in funding the dog park, there's the capacity to do that.
Joe, could you give the specific details on the pickleball construction project so it's explicitly clear?
Yeah, I think that'd be very helpful, Mayor. So, that surface has reached the end of its service life.
The two existing tennis courts?
The two existing tennis courts. And we've had problems with those, particularly in wet weather, particularly when it floods, that the surface bubbles up. Basically, it's like a carpet, for lack of a better way to kind of give you a visual picture. And when water gets up or something else gets up underneath that carpet, it bubbles up and it becomes unplayable until the sun comes out and dries it out and expands it a little bit to where most of those wrinkles go away. However, there's still parts of that court that provide dead spots. And so, our original plan was to remove that surface, improve the drainage around the court with some French drains, and then put a surface on it similar to what you see at the basketball court, which doesn't have the same issues. So, we talked with a contractor, the contractor who does the majority of that type of work in the Bay Area. There are two, and one of them is pretty close to us here. They came out. That's where we got the price from. That's where we are starting to develop the details for the court proper. It's still going to be pretty expensive just to resurface that court and do the drainage improvements.
But you're not talking about adding a third court? You're talking about the same footprint?
The same footprint. Actually, this project would add an additional court or maybe two pickleball courts. So, it's about half the size of the tennis court in terms of surface area, and it would be to the east of where the current play surface is now. So, it would add a specific pickleball playing surface. Then you would have the multi-use court that's there now, and then you would have the tennis specific court that is on the far west side of the, of the playing area.
So, there is an expansion of the footprint overall?
There is an expansion of the footprint overall.
Okay, so, that may provide clarity that wasn't there before in terms of what that project, and that's the 200,000 dollar project you're talking about?
That is the 200,000.
Resurfacing of the existing tennis courts, drainage for the existing tennis courts and construction of a new pickleball, I'll call it, facility or court.
Correct. Without, without my estimate in front of me, I'm going to say that just the improvement to the current surface, the plan would be somewhere in the nature neighborhood of 150, 150,000 dollars, maybe a little more than that. Adding that additional surface isn't the cost. That's not where the cost is. It's removing that surface that's there now, putting concrete on top of that with a pre-stressed reinforcement system in there, and then resurfacing that court.
So, roughly 50,000 more for then the newly designated pickleball.
Roughly. I mean, I don't have the cost in front of me, but that's probably pretty close.
Any other question or comment from the council?
Another quick question.
Councilmember Durham.
I know this is obvious, but we talk about this every year, so I just want to bring it up to belabor the point. It's in a flood zone, correct?
Correct. It is in a flood zone.
So, the decision, so we've heard about resurfacing at this place many times, at this location. So, I have to ask, has that been taken into consideration with the current?
It has. So, if you, if we, again, that's why I brought the basketball court up. So, the basketball court is in the same area. We don't have the same problems with the basketball court. It's built in a different way. It's built on concrete. It has a different playing surface, and that's the playing surface we're going to try to mimic with the current. It'll still get dirty and muddy if it floods, but we'll be able to hose it off and sweep it off and get people back on to playing it, which now takes some sunshine and a couple of good days of dry weather before it gets back to semi-playable. And even the true tennis players and even the pickleball players aren't entirely happy with the playing surface. It has a lot of dead spots and a lot of wrinkles. If you go out there and look at it, it's, I mean, I, it's safe, but it probably provides a little bit of challenge for people that are really trying to play.
Thank you.
Any additional questions on this item?
No, thank you.
Okay. I think that exhaust fund 50?
Uh, we have the streets and transportation section to go through, so this will be very quick. We're going to replace the three-quarter ton truck that we talked about earlier. Washington Street Bridge Rail, we have been in contact with the contractor who is getting ready to do the Jefferson Street Bridge Rail. He's offering us the same price that he offered during the bid, which we are surprised. Actually, the manufacturer of the equipment was really happy to hear that we may be moving forward. So, if we do move forward, that would be great. The annual street maintenance program, again, we talked about that a little bit earlier. This is a planning budget, so we're planning for the Measure T money so that when, excuse me, when, when the Measure T money comes available, we'll have a plan in front of you all to approve for some street improvements coming up in 2018, and then a street light replacement, which is an annual program.
So, Measure T, I think the town manager alluded to sidewalk and ADA-accessible curbing. I don't know that that fits with Measure T, does it?
So, we have a, an MOE, a maintenance of effort product that we're supposed to produce for the NVTA. That maintenance of effort product shows what we've spent in years past and on what we've spent it on, and the rule of thumb, and we're still trying to flesh this out a little bit with, with the oversight bunch. If we don't include it in our maintenance of effort, we're not going to get to use Measure T funds on it. However, if we do include it in our maintenance of effort documents, then we could potentially get to use it, and, and that's where we're kind of headed. I mean, we didn't have a lot of, our budget back then was a lot less lean, was a lot leaner than it is now. We did some big projects, but they were funded by grant funding, which is not included in the maintenance of effort calculation. So, that's what we're working on right now, Mayor.
In the broad scope, Mayor, Council, streetlights, curbs, sidewalks, pathways are actually Measure T-eligible, especially once you get your PMI to a certain level, which we're close. So, we do want to look, as the Public Works Director is talking about, we want to look at the broadest capacity used. So, we're carefully evaluating our MOE and looking forward, but I don't, I don't think it's going to be a challenge. Same thing, we're going to have an ongoing maintenance of effort to comply with the new state requirements under SB 1 for the increased highway taxes. So, it's something we're already doing the analysis on. But yes, we would hope to be able to use it, and it could potentially replace more streetlights, and it may prove a vehicle to support us if we chose to buy out the PG&E lights, which will end up being the last lights in town. And I'm sure those residents at some point in time will be talking to us about why they don't get better lights, and we can encourage them to talk to PG&E, and they probably aren't as accessible as you all are.
I would say the best rule of thumb, Mayor and Council, is one-time costs are generally going to be not allowed, but ongoing costs that, in other words, if you had an ongoing maintenance program that included streets and also included your handicap ramps and sidewalks or paths or streetlights, then those items could be included in Measure T. So, that's how we're looking at it.
That's a good clarification. Thank you. Anything else before we go on to Water Utility Enterprise Fund? Okay, let's go on to Water Utility Enterprise Fund.
Okay, well, you'll get to hear from me for just a tiny bit in both water and wastewater and then from Joe. So, Joe gets to take a break and take a drink of water, and I'll cover just a couple things for you. So, Water Utility Operations, I just want to share that it follows in terms of budgeting for operating costs, a similar practice that we've implemented for the general fund. So, 3.3% CPI applied to salaries, 9% budgeted for the medical premiums, and then we allocate all the same costs that the general fund experiences, OPEB, liability, property, and workers' comp insurance. So, personnel costs are equivalent to the general fund, and certification costs that are here required of the people filling these positions are also budgeted here because they're a little bit of a distinction. It's not new. It's the same. It's just like one of the nuances about water and wastewater that it requires its employees to have certain background in training. For water and wastewater, I'll be talking with you about revenue projections and the business side of things. But just so that you know, the, the way that we set up revenue projections is we look at the first three quarters of the existing year, so what we've collected so far, and then we guess on what we're going to do for the, how we're going to perform for the last quarter of this year by taking the last quarter of actuals that we have and adding those to the current three quarters that we've collected, if that makes sense. So, the last quarter of real actual revenue received is from '15, '16. So, we've taken that revenue and we've added it to our current collections thus far to adjust the estimated revenues for this year and to set the revenues for next year. So, as you might know, and you might have heard from our town manager, we haven't had a rate increase in the last two years now, and we do have a rate study that we're completing. We're very close. They are having some staff turnover, so we're managing some of that, but we are getting close to finish that up and come back to you and report to you on that. For 1718, the Water Operating Fund will draw on fund balance 149,166 dollars, and it'll leave a fund balance of 452,859. And the Water Capital Fund, which pays for capital projects in the water fund, will draw on fund balance 60,585 dollars and will leave a fund balance of 388,475 left in the fund for capital projects. So, that's big picture, the financial side of what's happening. I have a summary slide here for you.
Was there a question? Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, who are we using for the rate study?
It's the same firm that was used last time, Bartow-Wells.
Okay.
Associates, yes. So, you've got a different sheet in front of you in the iPad that you receive, which has significantly more detail, but for purposes of the public and kind of navigating this, the PowerPoint slide really gives you a big roll-up. Total operating revenues for the last two actual years of '14 and '15, the budget for '16, '17, and the new estimates, and then the proposed new amounts. You can see that we believe that in 1718, based on those projections of using the current three quarters plus '15, '16's actual quarters, we expect to end with an operating income of only 49,084 for 1718. We do account for the investment earnings that we receive in this fund and have accounted for that. And then we have a transfer from this fund into water capital to fund some of the capital projects of 200,000 dollars. That's been standard practice. So, net, as I mentioned earlier, we'll end up drawing down 198,250 on fund balance and leaving a 452,000 dollars roughly in fund balance for the operating fund in water. Are there any questions about that?
Yeah, I have a question. You're talking about your projections and calculations. Is it too premature, or will you even be able to project as drought conditions, or at least the drought from the state, basically the status of the drought in California, if the restrictions are lifted and water use is increased and revenue therefore follows with increased revenue, are you able to project any of that at any point?
Well, we don't have, we don't have a significant update, and plus, sometimes, you know, behavior is sort of interesting in that you may have that lifted, but you may have already developed a new habit. Plus, for example, we've had some people take advantage of cash for grass. That creates a permanent shift in water consumption. So, I think we need to consider all of those, but the short answer is no. We've not yet projected, but we've also not fully heard from the state. So, I think it's a little bit premature, but we'll be watching for sure.
And then the other issue is that we have to wait until the Veterans Home determines, is this water or is it, the rates? Go ahead, Maria.
So, I think, so I think what you're asking is what happens with the true-up, right?
Yes.
So, with the Veterans Home, we buy water from them to distribute to our customers, and we treat their wastewater. So, we do true-up. I already have an appointment with their staff person next month, so we're going to start the process earlier. We hope to finish it up. We rolled back our projection a tiny bit on the cost of water based on some water meter practices that were improved so that that water meter reading practice on their end impacts what we're billed for total water purchase. So, we rolled that back. This budget considers that. One of the things that's important about remembering about what we do when we buy water from the Veterans Home is the, and I'll get into this in a graph in a minute, but it's that they run their business differently than we do. So, they run on a cash basis. That means that whatever comes up that year and whatever money they have, that's what they're going to spend. They don't do asset management planning. This is, this is just a different business model. And so, as a result of that, as their customer, if something comes up, we'll experience a spike or we'll experience a slight dip depending upon what their costs are for water. For wastewater, what we do is we tell them to anticipate that they're going to cover 50% of our wastewater operating budget. And then at the end of the year, we look at the flow and operating practices, if you will, in wastewater, and we actually are able to, to measure what the actual flow or load has caused from the Vets Home, and we actually bill them back for that amount. For example, last year, it was something like 64 and change percent. So, we bill them for 64% of the operating costs in wastewater for the town.
Even though you told them to at least assume 50?
Yes. So, we assume in, in our modeling for wastewater, we assume we're going to get 50% back of that budget, and we count it as revenue because we know minimally we'll get that. Sometimes we get a little more. But we're working this year at separating water purchase from wastewater to be really clean about what's happening because they're really two operations, and we do a reasonable job of putting things together to see how things true-up, but really, I want to be true to the books on, not that we're not before, but I just want to be really clear about what we spend on water and then what we get back for wastewater and just keep them really separate because they're, they're different operating funds.
And I also need to caution the council that we're in for a very different water rate structure as a result of San Juan Capistrano, the U.S. Supreme Court case. The unfortunate is that's going to actually shift costs to lower volume users because of our tiered rate structure, which the courts have ruled unconstitutional. So, as we go through this structure, you may remember, we have three rate components. The first is a fixed fee, which is basically the cost of the water system, the staff, the personnel, the regulatory compliance, and all the administrative overhead regardless of any water consumption. So, that's a fixed fee regardless of how much you use. Second is your consumption. So, again, if you use a little bit, you're going to pay less. Our consumption is a direct product of what we purchase from the Veterans Home. Our consumption is a direct product of what we purchased from the Veterans Home. The third component is a system replacement fee, which we have been collecting and will need to generate a bit more, but to help for future system replacement. So we'll be looking at those areas. And we have a similar structure when you get into the wastewater utility bill where it's a fixed fee and then a system replacement fee. But we are, we're looking at a very different water rate structure this year to comply with the Supreme Court ruling.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. So I just want to share this graph more for purposes. I know some people do a little bit better with a picture versus the big table that I just covered. And so this really just shares with you how expenditures and revenues are starting to catch up with one another, if you will, and it does remind us that we are due to review our rates, right? So the red bar is the expenses and the yellow bar is our revenue. Questions about that?
Quick question going back.
Go ahead.
You have the water purchases going down, sorry, in...
Yes.
Water purchases going down 16%?
Yes.
Is there a specific reason what that's based on?
So yeah, so we worked with the Veterans Home this past year for 15, 16. We actually just trued up with them and we worked with them to get them to adjust the way that they were reading the meters, which then flow into town, which causes them to bill us. That resulted in them, they're in the process of actually issuing us a refund for overbilling us. And so, yeah, that's my expectation, we'll meet that mark, but you know, we'll see.
That was very gently and politically correctly put.
We still need water. So if there aren't any more questions, we'll run, we'll go through the operating side of the budget, which Joe can cover. Good?
Okay.
There you go.
All right, thank you very much, Maria. So for the water operations and distribution, I will say, just to kind of add on to that prior conversation, that the Orion and Badger meter reading system that we have installed has also helped us capture some significant leaks and that is adding up to some water savings as well. So all of those things combined are definitely helping us to conserve water. But back to operations and distribution, we're going to complete our mandated annual water quality mail report to all 831 customers. We're going to continue with our training, especially in water and wastewater. Training is mandatory. It's highly regulated and they have CEUs that they need to keep up with. And so we, and they're very active at making sure that they stay abreast of those, but we are trying to also cross-train the staff so that whatever the call on whatever the day with whoever's here can respond to that call and make the improvement or at least make it safe until we can restore the service. And then we're going to implement the conclusions from the rate study when we get them. The overall budget is slightly increased about 1.5%. It reflects a few things. Most of all, it reflects the full transition of our water operations to utility division. If you recall in past presentations, the water service person actually was out of the municipal operations department and it was a little bit of a misfit. It's a much better fit to be out of utilities. They can support each other. They're much more familiar with the regulatory environment and much more supportive and able to help when water needs or wastewater needs come up. So it's a good fit. Again, this budget also increase, reflects the need that there has been no increase in revenue as we wait on the rate study to finish up. Water purchases and conservation. We're going to distribute the annual water quality consumer confidence report in electronic format. We've been doing that for several years. We're going to work with the utility, the Vets Home utility staff to make sure we're getting the right meter reading practices and we are installing some of our Badger and Orion products where we can on some of theirs. So it makes some of those discussions that when they meet the reader, when they read the meter or when we read the meter, we don't get an error just in those two meter reading evolutions because depending on when you read the meter, it's a different number, right? So now we're able to look back and agree on a time when we're taking that meter read and it's captured in our system and they can look at it online as a customer and so there's no disagreement on a meter read. And we're going to complete and manage the Orion meter reading system. That's including a rollout that we have planned to all of our water customers to help them understand how to use that system on their smart device so that they can look at their own water usage and if they really want to drill down into it, they can set a limit so that if their own home use exceeds that limit, it will send an alert to them. We have one customer already who was trying to figure out, you know, how much water he used in a, taking a shower. The system can't read that accurately in that amount of time. It's basically records itself once in a 24-hour period, but that's how into it some of our customers are in looking at their usage and trying to figure out how to get their usage down to an even more infinite amount or a finite amount.
One thing else I want to share under water conservation and purchase, it actually has more to do with the nature of our rate structure. You may have heard that there are some water agencies and jurisdictions that their water department is operating in a deficit because of how their rates are structured. The way we actually have structured ours, we're in a very healthy position compared to some of those because all of our fixed costs are addressed on our fixed fee. We don't have a blended rate and therefore because we sold less water, we made less money that fee is capturing. So I just want to say there's some positive things about the steps the council has taken and when we sell less water, we buy less water from the Veterans Homes. I just kind of wanted you, some people think that the water rate increase potentially is because we're making up for conservation and in our case, that's not at all true.
Question, Mayor?
That actually was going to be my question. Does the fixed rate that we charge for the, you know, personnel and does it cover the costs of those things?
It does. And that's why, I mean, we'll be, you're going to see, you're going to see recommendation for a rate increase. I'm just going to tell everybody that right now because we haven't recovered, over the last two years, we're approximately 7% behind just on base CPI. So we're going to need to make some ground. But yes, the intent of that fee component is that it covers our fixed costs, which includes staff, the regulatory compliance, systems maintenance. And then the capital fee, the system replacement fee is money that we're putting in for future line replacement. So the model works well, especially for a small system like ours where we would have great volatility because, you know, if we were, we didn't have a 20% corresponding loss in our revenues if you go look at your tracking, which some of our neighboring jurisdictions have.
To your point, I mean, 7%, just to put that in perspective, I mean, when we set, had to do a big rate study seven years ago, we were talking about 17% increases year-over-year for five years just to kind of get even. So this is a very small number, but we will have to do a good job when we're dealing with San Juan Capistrano because those are the low-end users who are going to get hit the hardest. So when we do our Prop 218, I think we need to really spell that out.
And that's just going to be, it's not, again, this is one of those, yes. I mean, I don't have a good answer because this is a case where our state legislatures failed us because they talked about coming back to restore the ability to do tiered systems to encourage conservation, but haven't found the huevos to do it.
So let's get back to, is it Joe or Maria at this point?
It's me, so.
Okay. Hold on just a second. Councilmember Doerman?
Thank you. On the narrative, you prepared a table for us by year and acre foot and cost per acre foot and it stops at 2015, 2016?
Yes, so we have to look, so in June, when I start to meet with the Vets Home, we have to look back for 16, 17.
They don't give us a number.
So we will not know until you true-up what we actually paid per acre foot. Exactly.
That also makes planning a little interesting.
Yeah, that's how the true-up occurs. So we say to them, here are our actuals for the year on wastewater, please pay us. It was 50% of the budget or more based on their flow, right, wastewater and then water. We finished reading the meters, right, through the end of June, 16, 17, and then we say, oh, this is really how much came through the water, through the meters, bill us, and then we sort of...
And is there any ballpark or parameters on what we pay per acre foot? Is there?
So that's, so the graph is coming, which will be interesting. But it is, it's, so to get to it first, it's erratic because they run on a cash basis. So they don't have a fund balance, they don't have a capital fund, they don't, so they just budget for what they're going to need next year or pay for whatever's coming up. They're not doing any kind of enterprise planning.
So the contract basically says whatever they have to spend, they have to spend and we pay our pro rata of that?
Correct. Now, they're supposed to do...
General outline?
They are supposed to do, I think, a better job of advising us as to cost impacts and communication than they have been. I will also share with you that Joe and I have some concerns that the system might need a little more maintenance and investment than they've been making, which is only going to lead to increased costs. Now, remember, we're not their only customer. They have to charge themselves and they have a few others and we've been having, as you all know, I shared with you the last six or seven months with a challenging conversation with them on trying to make sure we understood the billing adjustments, which we finally have resolved. And we've also had some conversations about system maintenance and staff, so...
Yeah, the town uses historical projections or historical data for projections on what the likely increase will be because it's really never a decrease.
But I will...
There is something built, hold on just a second. So there is something built into our budget that says we expect to have to pay X dollars for what we assume is going to be roughly our water consumption. So that number's there and then Maria corrects it.
So what we did when we did...
Just a second, just a second. Go ahead, Maria.
So I just wanted to show you this picture. I skipped a slide for a hot minute just so I could share with you. So the yellow bars are the cost per acre foot history and the red solid line is really kind of what happens year-to-year with the price shift. So you can see in 14, 15, and 15, 16 with a projected, you know, 16, 17 based on the budget number, that now we're in the, you know, single digits. The dotted line is a two-year kind of moving average to smooth things. So I mean, smoothing works really well for forecasting, but smoothing when you're trying to anticipate what a business does when they run on cash basis can be interesting, right? Because you can see how that red line goes up and down, but it seems to have somewhat settled. I would expect that based on their changed meter reading practices, water conservation measurements, efforts that are going on throughout the town with our residents, the Orion system that will hopefully get to something steady, but it's early to say, but I just, I thought you'd, well, I don't know, I like pictures like this because they sort of give me a sense of what's happening. So if it feels a little bit awkward when we're getting our bill from the Vets Home, well, it's right because it's been a little bit, it's been a little bit tough, but I think it could get better.
What I will also point out, for those of you that were involved in our rate setting for the last cycle, you remember we used an average of 7.5% as an anticipated rate increase. And the reason I want to show the, that is really close to the 8% moving benchmark. So reasonable in that area.
Right. Councilmember Mueller?
That was exactly what I wanted to say, that we use 7.5% projected year-over-year for five years to deal with these variations.
Right.
So back to Joe, if you want to do consideration.
Okay, Joe. Really quickly, our rebates have been reduced slightly and that reflects the fact that we, as a town, we were probably one of the bigger customers when it came to rebates. We reduce a lot of our lawn and put in drought tolerant systems and the other methods for conservation rebates are toilets and that kind of thing and it just, it's not a lot of money. So we reduced it by about $10,000, recognizing that that has been going down a little bit each year. We will also complete the implementation of our wireless meters, Orion system we've been talking about, give our customers some ability to access that online technology and they will be able to tell, they will be able to see for themselves how much water they use and when they're using it, when they want to, not at the end of each month or at the end of each billing cycle.
So then is the graph that we just talked about, so unless you've got other questions, we can...
I think we covered it.
Good. Okay.
Okay. Water Capital Improvement Fund. So this fund, because we're not, we don't have any street work going on this year, we will not be doing a main and service lateral replacement program. That will go into a fund balance where it will be available when next we need it. Water meter replacement program, this is the last year of a three- or a four-year cycle of replacing water meters. So what you'll see in the upcoming years after this is a much smaller budget that will build a fund balance so that we can replace the meters again in five or six years when we need them. And then at the very top of the list is the No Des Hydrant and Main Flushing System that we did about two years ago. It's a bit lower than we did it a couple of years ago because we realized that we're not going to have the same, or we hope that we don't have the same kinds of sand and sediment in the system because we removed an awful lot of that, if you recall, two years ago. So we think it'll be a much more efficient program. The really great part about this hydrant and main flushing is the water gets recycled, cleaned up, and put back into our system. So it's not going out on the street, it's not going down the drain and we're not having to pay for it and not be able to use it.
So this slide just is a restatement of what our drought reserve fund has in fund balance or will have in fund balance through June 30th. Nice, healthy reserve should anything ever happen to us.
One other thing I will give you as options, the, on the drought reserve fund, our policy provides for keeping the balance, but it does allow you, if you were to do something with the principal, and I just share that with you because you have $60,000 if you were to do something in water-related structures with that, if you chose to.
Thank you. Impact fees? Are we still on that?
So if it's okay, I just want to cover impact fees right before debt at the very end because we've got impact fees for wastewater too and they're just kind of the same, this way you don't visit it twice.
Sure.
Okay. So I'm just going to move us on to wastewater utility. So we're on wastewater side of things now.
Let's just make sure everybody's following along. We got that?
Yep. So with wastewater, we've done the same thing we did with water and the same thing we did with the general fund related to operating costs, 3.3 CPI, 9% of medical premiums, the same allocations. We use the revenue projections in the current year, everything we've collected to date through the first three quarters plus any actuals that we collected in 15, 16, final quarter so that we can project our estimated for 16, 17 and our 17, 18 revenues. So there's no revenue increases the last two years and as I said, the rate study's underway with Bartle Wells, hoping to get that buttoned up very soon. The largest customer that we have, as we've mentioned, is the Veterans Home. So in the wastewater budget, we budget for a 50% reimbursement of the projected costs in the operating fund. So that's built into this model and this budget that you receive. And we do an end-of-year reconciliation with the Vets Home annually and we're working to move that and do that sooner than later and I'm excited that we already have a meeting set for next month, so it's good. In wastewater, the news is a little bit different in terms of what's happening. The wastewater operating fund is going to draw on fund balance by $119,000 and it'll leave $193,000 in there. When I get to wastewater treatment, capital recovery, we're ending in a negative fund balance of $963,605. So that's a big number. There's multiple reasons, but the largest one is this. We did a very large recycling project, I think in 14, 15, to the tune of about $2 million and we have debt for that. So in wastewater treatment, not only do we have capital projects that we pay for on an ongoing basis, we have the depreciation for the value of the $2 million and then we have the debt in there. So the way that the modeling is set right now, it takes all of those pieces into account and it leaves a negative fund balance as a result of that. It counts it all and that's the reason for the $963.
Do you have a recommendation on what to do about that?
Well, we do need to look at how to maybe separate out the depreciation if we can, but it doesn't mean that depreciation goes away. It can be a bookkeeping thing, we just need to be careful that, much like when we talked about the reserve funds for equipment replacement and repair, it's sort of the same thing. We need to be saving to repair, replace these assets which are coming online. And presently, our system replacement fees, when we look at the history in capital recovery, for example, the costs of the projects have outpaced the revenues that have come in, causing even more... the costs of the projects have outpaced the revenues that have come in, causing even more of a negative. So, we do need to raise rates.
Sounds like the gas tax.
A little bit.
Vice Mayor?
So, that the wastewater treatment capital recovery, does that include the funds that we receive from the customers who receive our treated water?
Does that include, I'm sorry, ask me again? What was the question?
You're talking about the vineyard-
It doesn't, but Vice Mayor, here's what I will tell you. First of all, that's another subsidy on the town. We receive a 10% recovery and I'll repeat that again, a 10% recovery on the cost of the treatment and the pipeline structure because of the systems that are put in place.
But we have to get rid of that water somehow and that's the only option that we have been able to identify because we're not allowed to release it to the river.
We do have, and you'll see, we do have, I think approximately, and I don't have it in front of me, so I apologize, but we have about a 10% increase that we're applying to our recycled water customers. But that's still not, you know-
That's not-
Basically, no. And when we have, as the mayor alluded to, our system because of the structure, we have to move the waste treated somewhere. So, our customers, while they really want the water, they aren't necessarily willing to pay for it at full price either.
I understand. Thank you.
We didn't have a very good bargaining position on that. Somebody wanted to build a storage facility.
So, I have a question.
Councilmember Mueller?
So, Maria, this is, this is a very, very big number. So, these rates are going to go up at least what they did over the first five years or more.
Well, we're going to be working on that. And part of it is also trying to see if there's a different way to deal with the depreciation of that large asset for the recycling system. So, the thing is, you bring in these really large assets online and you have debt for them. They're not totally paid off, but you have to depreciate the asset because that's what we're required to do. Some of it, a lot of people sort of say, well, it's bookkeeping, but it doesn't look good. And you have to figure out a way to have cash flow because my concern for the town is to always have funds available for your capital projects. And so, right now, if you, if you were to look at the capital treatment recovery page with the budget, you'll see that the system replacement fee revenues that come in aren't enough to cover or haven't been historically enough to cover your projects, which is why you had to take on debt, hence the depreciation. It's just kind of like this. So, we're working on that with the rate setting, excuse me.
But what I would think would make, I mean, this is not something that's really due to these capital costs or regulatory costs like they were the time before. We're really paying off this, what I would call like a one-time charge for all this wastewater. We're really at close to 100. So, you know, you can't get rid of more than 100. We're like at 90 something, we're not really at 100. So, couldn't we do something to kind of help these rates that were going to definitely have to go up, not take these big hits, is to do them, one, over time, or do what we did before and borrow some money out of our water reserve fund and pay ourselves back over time with some interest instead of taking this big hit? I just don't-
Those are all options.
I definitely don't want the public to say, what's going on, what happened? This is complicated, you know?
Yes, it is, it is complicated, definitely not to be taken lightly. And so, as I said, the different pieces, right? Checking to see how we can manage that depreciation. If that can relieve some of that negative, that's the first thing you want to do. And then you want to borrow from your reserve fund and look at options, but you want to look at the rates too.
And then our timeline, I mean, we can adjust a timeline to take care of, you know, kind of project out what regulatory stuff is coming.
Yes.
We've got quite a bit of history now and just not make a big hit. You know, we don't have to take it all in like we did before in five years. So, are those options being, are you plugging those into the model and seeing what-
We're looking at that with them. And you know, it's with, with all of this, it's, you know, the cost of, you know, normal things of the enterprise, your staffing costs, your maintenance costs, your, everything else that feeds into this, right? So, this is just the capital side. As I said, in the operating fund, so where we pay for all the personnel costs, you're going to end up with $193, but it's that capital.
Yeah, that's really the differential between that, let's just, you know, call it 800,000. I mean, that is a very big number for a very specific reason that-
The good news is we know, not because I, not because I think it's fair to say this, but the history shows you well enough. You've got that big project, $2 million and it shows you right away how that went down. So, we've got good enough records that we can try to figure this out a little bit and develop like a nice, smooth-
Right.
Hopefully, soft landing, if you will, over, to achieve that over time.
Right.
But it's going to take a little bit.
Yeah. Well, they can just kind of keep running iterations till you, I think we have a number that people won't scream over, so-
We're getting close.
Okay.
Vice Mayor has a question.
Yes, thank you. So, I don't believe we have installed the photo of Voltaic up there yet, have we?
I think we did.
That's actually, if you may recall-
Are you on to-
I'm sorry, thank you. You may recall that, it was in the Friday Blurb and actually covered in the Register, the construction is just about to start on that project. Now, I will point out to you, that's going to help stabilize the energy cost. It will not result in a big savings the first couple of years, but when we look at the delta between future, you'll start seeing. But yes, that project is about to-
And the methane recapture?
Methane capture has been on for a number of years.
And that has, how has that impacted the-
It's reduced cost. It has reduced costs significantly and we're still paying that loan off as well, but it has reduced costs significantly.
How much is that loan, do we know?
I think it's about $12,000 a year.
We talked about that earlier, yeah.
And when will that be paid off?
About six years.
Thank you.
So, those are some positive things that will, you know, come off and still have a longer-term shelf life as you're talking about.
And is this when we should remind listeners that we're not allowed to make a profit on any rates here? This is all about cost recovery of the services delivered. So, we don't raise rates just to make more money. We are trying to cover the expenses of the systems.
Definitely. And the graphs that I've shared, you know, you've seen the bar graphs almost line up. And I'll share another picture which will show the cost of capital, both in collection and treatment, that far outpaces the revenues. And it's because we're required to do certain things and we are doing them for the good of the town that it's like that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, just to summarize, wastewater collection capital, which is the other capital fund for collection and not treatment, we're going to draw $80,000 and the fund balance will be, remaining will be $13,592. So, again, this is telling of, we've been without a rate increase for two years. The fund balances are running really low in the two, at least two of the funds and the other one, well, we've talked about already. So, this is just the operating fund table, similar to the one that I showed you before, where we see revenues and expenses and we show the draw that I had mentioned and the ending fund balance for $193, $111 in seventeen eighteen. So, we're not ending red, it's just red because that's how much the draw is and I wanted you to be able to see it. Any questions?
Nope.
And again, as we talked about, water utility collection system revenues over expenditures, you can see that expenditures are outpacing revenues in seventeen eighteen. In sixteen seventeen, they're projected to outpace as well. We have had some small reallocation of staff to correct where staff is spending their time, which is the right thing and that adds to some of this, but it's not nearly as significant as some of the capital costs and maintenance costs that we have. And so, this is, I think, where kind of the real story is, and this is what I mentioned earlier. So, the yellow bar is your total revenue and your red bar is your wastewater treatment expenses. There's that large $2 million project. And then the blue is the wastewater collection expenses, two different types of expenses. We've separated them. I probably should have put the two bars on top of each other because they're still expenses and the revenues aren't nearly enough. And so, that, that just really tells you what's happening. We don't have enough to cover the costs, that with the depreciation piece. So, in these funds, we do have some debt and some of it are transfers too, right? So, in past practice, we've always transferred from Fund 62 into the capital fund, $63, $50,000. We're doing that this year. And then from Fund 63, we're transferring $180,000 for the collection capital. So, Fund 62 is really the only source of revenue and then we put money in the two other funds and we draw down on fund balance where we need to. Regarding debt, as we discussed, we've got debt in wastewater for the energy efficiency loan for the methane capture, $12,525 annually. I think that, pretty sure that loan has no interest, six years to pay off. Wastewater Treatment Plan, State Water Resources Loan, $164,662. That's the payment for the year. And then we've got the debt payment for the bonds for the lease revenue for the sewer portion, which is $29,343. Questions about that?
No.
Okay. So, this is the operations side of the budget. Joe?
Sure. So, when you talk about wastewater, it's really about reducing the amount of water, raw product that you're getting into the system because that helps reduce the cost. So, for us, the easiest way to do that is reduce infiltration and inflow into our collection system. We do that in a variety of ways, mostly through our capital projects program by sealing up some of the pipes and the manholes where we have identified them as leaking or needing repair. We're going to continue to research and work to create the sewer lateral ordinance that will address sewer issues upon transfer of ownership. This is a program, a policy that was, I think, before you, slightly before I came here. Now, with our new sewer line warranty that's being offered in town, we think this is a good time to revisit that, this program after we do a little bit of work before we bring it to you all. We're going to continue to rehabilitate the sections of the A-line. The A-line is the furthest east line that runs basically down Beard Ditch from one end of town to the other. F-line comes down, pretty much down Washington and has a couple of jogs in it, but both those lines are on either side of town, the west and east side. We're going to work continuously on our fog program, fats, oils and grease to try to help reduce the treatment. All of these are in an effort to help reduce costs and problems in our collection system. Use some Acela to help us continue mapping and applications and incorporate the rate water, the wastewater rate study as applicable. Also, looking forward to that sewer, the solar project coming online. They are out there working as we speak. We're going to talk about the Utility Collections Systems Operation Fund. Again, budget highlights, the wastewater collections budget has a slight increase of 2% for the fiscal year, mostly driven by personnel, increased personnel costs. There was also recognition there's been no increase in revenue and so, we're trying to keep the budget flat. We've been working on that for the past couple of years now. Waste water treatment operations, so switching from the collection side, what we do here in town, and now going up on the hill to the treatment plant. We're going to continue with the SCADA implementation. So, for those of you who recall and some of you who don't recall, SCADA allows our, our plant operators to view and operate some parts of the plant remotely. In years past, they would have had a pager and they would have gotten an alarm and they would have had no idea what is going on in the plant. Now, they can look on their smartphone or smart device, have a view of what's going on on a dashboard and in some cases, actually perform some operations that help relieve that issue right from their, their smart device. So, we're going to continue to try to improve that. Continue to refine some of our internal operating policies and procedures, Acela and technology to help us improve our efficiency and effectiveness and incorporate the recommendations from the rate study. Some of the budget highlights for wastewater treatment operations. Overall, our budget has increased 1.7 for this year and that is a result of increased personnel costs. The remaining budget is flat, recognizing that the revenues haven't been increased and there's a rate study underway. There have, there has been an increase in chemicals and allocated costs. We are a member of a joint purchasing program. We're part of a, I think it's the North Bay Chemical, North Bay Chemical Association or something similar. So, we buy on a group rate and we benefit from the, from having that group buy chemicals. However, there is a slight increase. And then $12,000, as we talked about earlier for the energy efficient loan, there's about five or six years left on that. Wastewater Treatment Capital Recovery. So, dredge a waste pond is the big number on this page. Typically, we go every, they try to do it once every 20 years. It's been 25 years since they've dredged a wastewater pond. So, initially, they looked at trying to, when I first started looking at this and saw what the program had entailed, they, they thought they could drain the pond, dry it out and then, and then get the sludge out that way. They don't think that they're going to be able to do that now. So, this reflects a different type of process. Basically, it's a dredge that floats on the surface of the water and then the mud is removed and hauled off in the same kind of fashion as it would have been otherwise, except now there are water in the pond. We're going to replace two pumps at the joint treatment plant for $40,000. This is the first of a two-year program. So, next year, we'll be replacing the other two pumps and then the plant equipment replacement program. This will go into fund balance to build, to build some fund replacements so that when we need that money, it's available for us to replace equipment. Any questions on our capital program? Councilmember Mueller?
Not the, well, back a couple fund numbers. So, because this was such a heavy rain season, do we see a lot, a big increase in inflow from the veterans home because of their cracked pipes and all that and how we-
We do see a lot of, of inflow during wet weather conditions from the veterans home. We definitely have had conversations with them and conversations with their senior architect on a different project. We were talking about the capacity of our plant and I made the remark to them that their money was probably best spent improving the system that's in the ground now because they're actually going to save quite a bit of money if they can stop. Basically, they're, they're paying to treat clean water.
Right, yeah.
So, to the extent that they can reduce that clean water from infiltrating into their system, we think they might have some, some sumps tied into there and stuff that's basically pumping additional clean water into the system that's already piped in. So, it's not even just leaking in, it's other stuff that wouldn't be, it's not, we've already removed that stuff from our system, but they're still trying to identify it and remove it. So, they have such an old system, they're, when it does rain, they're basically just trying to keep it in the ground. They're really struggling to kind of keep that system operational.
Wow. Unfortunate, but reality. Okay. So, the other question I have is for the pond dredging. So, there's a system that's going to float on the top and it's going to collect stuff and then we, does it do it just all at once and then Pisoni comes down with a truck and takes it away or?
Not quite sure how that's going to work, but we think that that's going to, it's going to be so, it's almost going to be a slurry when they pull it out that they're not going to be able to haul it because there's no method that would allow them to haul it without it being all over the truck and the road. So, they're probably going to put it in our pond, let it dry and settle. We have a pond that they're going to be able to put it in and then we'll roll it up with the rest of our stuff and Pisoni will haul it away. That's what we think is going to happen.
Okay. So, we don't have to line that pond now or anything?
No, 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 no. We're going to avoid that whole scenario.
All right.
So, similar to what you would see in a river where they come out with a dredge and dredge a pond, that's what these guys do for a living in wastewater systems.
Great.
All right. Now, we're into the collections part of our discussion on capital improvements. So, this is the inflow, oh, we looked at this one, right? Didn't we look, did we look at it?
No.
Nope, we didn't? Okay. Inflow and infill reduction program. So, again, to the extent that we can reduce our inflow and infiltration, it directly reduces the cost to our customers of treating our sewage that comes out of the collection system. Sewer man and replacement and repair program, this is another part of that program. They kind of work hand in hand. And I would like to mention that both of these programs are required under the terms of our newest permit. I know we had, we were discussing the recycled water program a couple of slides back. That, again, is part of this permit system as well. So, as the mayor rightly noted, that recycled water program gives us a little bit of flexibility in how we're able to release to the river. The terms aren't so strict in when we release. We have to have a certain flow rate, but we get some flexibility on the days when we can release and that definitely benefits us and benefits our customers. So, along with these two programs, they're all working together to help make our permitting process easier and to reduce- process easier and to reduce the cost to our customers at some point when our system will be watertight and we won't have to be treating fresh water. Town pump station equipment replacement program, so this will just go into a reserve, and we will build fund balance and be able to draw on that when we have to replace some of the equipment down to town pump station.
Time for impact fees?
It is time for impact fees. Thank you. So we have impact fees in both water and sewer, and so rather than covering them separately because it's pretty much the same statement, all impact fees are budgeted at zero revenue because it's a very small revenue source for the town. However, when we do receive them, we allocate them per our ordinance. And so in sewer and water, for example, in sixteen-seventy, this fiscal year, based on all the permits that have been pulled and what's been paid to date, Fund Sixty-Five in wastewater has received thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, and then Fund Fifty-Eight Water has received thirty-one, five, sixty-three. We, when we receive those funds into the impact fee fund, we then quarterly or biannually transfer them to the capital improvement funds for each of the budgets. So wastewater receives, Fund Sixty-four receives its infusion, and Fund Sixty receives that. So we're doing everything we can to put the right revenues in the right place to get those capital funds where they need to be. It's just the revenue streams are small. But the summary of what we're planning to do this year is to not budget for any revenues for impact fees, and that's been our practice because it's such a small amount.
From where are we getting any impact fees at this point?
This would have been from, you have a couple homes that were raised and then rebuilt off Yountville Cross Road. You also have handwritten and.
R-H?
R-H, and, because I have a philosophy, I look at whether impact fees were ever paid on a property, and then if it's demolished, then they have to start from scratch.
Okay. Vice Mayor, do you have a question?
Yes, I did. So are these impact fees from the wastewater, are they due to the sewer lateral connection fees?
No, they're completely separate. These are for new construction and development. The town, and it goes back a while, it predates my time, actually had a survey and a study done of some of the costs. So this is where you are now collecting for contributions made earlier for systems or road improvements and things like that. We're dealing, obviously, with water, wastewater here, but it's the same for the other impact fees. So they're paying their share of the investment that was made at an earlier date by the town.
Can you clarify for me, then, the sewer lateral connection impact fees are going to be coming, and that's sort of?
I'm not sure I'm following your question, so maybe you can?
Well, I, I believe that in the, I think in the state, that the sewer laterals are, you know, having to be inspected and because of the, is that true?
Right now, what we have, this is, impact fees are only for new development.
I see. Never mind.
So when we talk about, when you were mentioning sewer laterals, the program that the Public Works Director was talking about is, we've been talking about a requirement that when a property sells, that the sewer lines are inspected, and if there's any issues, they be fixed at that point in time.
Right.
You may recall, that was when we learned that realtors don't like things that affect the timely escrow. So we're reviewing that one again, but that's a different program, and it would only apply at that point in time.
Thank you.
Is that it for impact fees?
That is it for impact fees.
Debt service funds?
So this is just a brief summary on our debt that we're going to be paying. When our town manager covered the general fund summary for you at the last workshop, you saw these in the form of transfers mostly. The only one you don't see in the general fund is Measure A because it's separate. But we basically plan to make our required payments for the lease revenue bonds for two thousand and eight. We're going to be paying six hundred and sixty-eight, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand as required. Our payoff year there is two thousand and thirty-nine. For the two thousand and thirteen lease revenue bonds, we have budgeted three hundred and thirty, nine hundred and seventy to meet the debt obligation, and the payoff year for that is two thousand and twenty-seven. And then, as our town manager mentioned, in this next fiscal year, we're going to make our final payment for Measure A for the debt service as well. So when Abbott County pays us, they reimburse us for the projects we've expended, but also sends us, excuse me, a payment for the debt. So that payment always comes in first, we pay that first. So we plan to pay that debt off at the end of the year, in line with the end sunset of the Measure A tax.
I don't suppose we can use Measure T money on the paying down of the Madison Yount Street repaving?
I don't, well, that's.
Kind of like retroactively covering costs?
No, I know the answer to that one, having been involved in drafting. It is a going forward, only you cannot use it to pay back further.
That's unfortunate.
That goes back to when the discussion. I will also point out that the Finance Director and I have had brief conversations with our financial advisor, and we are going to be doing an analysis of whether an earlier refinancing of our two thousand and eight lease revenue bond may make sense or not. Right, right, right now, it looks like preliminarily it could, although it has GAN limit implications. So right now, I have to figure out which one's more important. But we are, we are looking, unfortunately, I'm leaning that way, too. But, so we are looking at that, and that will probably happen one way or the other. But we just wanted you to be aware that we are being proactive, and we have a very proactive financial advisor letting us know what the environment is out there.
Any questions on debt service?
I don't see any.
So this concludes our budget workshop for today. We will go back and do a lot of fact checking and spell checking and try to clean things up as best we can and format things so we can get you a document. We will be back to you on June twentieth for budget summary and adoption. And at that time, I'll also provide a primer on GAN limit, even though it's always been a part of our budget, but just given where we are, I'll bring that to you at that time. If there are any other questions, happy to take them.
Councilor Mueller?
So the June twentieth, I think we heard earlier, is only going to have three council members. So to pass this at that meeting in time for a fiscal year, it has to be unanimous. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It won't pass otherwise.
All right.
Takes three of you to pass the budget.
Yes, all three have to.
Just making a very clear statement here about my assumptions.
Fair enough.
All right.
I was about to ask, because we are going to be missing two council members, if, especially those two council members, had any questions about the budget as it stands, because this will be what we are going to be deliberating on with you not there. So, or are you comfortable with the way things are presented?
Well, I am, but I do want to review things and possibly come in and talk with you, Maria.
Happy to see you anytime. Thank you.
And then also the rest of the council, are there any other questions that you want to bring up that, while we have all five of us here, we can discuss? Or are we comfortable with the way it's been presented?
And just to follow up on that, while we're looking for it, we're going to bring back the budget document, cleaning up based on the assertions and the comments that you've all made. So if you do want to make changes or an adjustment, we would really encourage your feedback and direction on that at this point in time.
Right, because I hesitate to take on anything of substance at the June twenty meeting that then doesn't include two of the five of us. So it would be fair and appropriate to bring those issues up now, if there are any. I don't see any outstanding for myself, but there may be. There was a question about whether money, the hundred and eighty or whatever the dollar amount was, that seems to be kind of the only big-ticket item that was brought up. I don't know if there's any further discussion on that, or if that got clarified and resolved.
Well, you'll have.
Well, let me, sorry, let me just ask, are you satisfied with where that is? Councilor Dorman?
I still have the same concern about spending the money on a, an individual sport when we have some other things out there, but I do have respect for the process. I don't know if there's a way to, as the town manager suggested, defer that portion, or if that would make some difference in the economics of the job, you know, if the pickleball courts were the one, the project to be undertaken and they had to be built separately. So, I mean, I still have questions and thoughts about it, but I don't know what could be done about it.
I think what I would suggest, the real question there is you need to use your, you know, your boards and commissions were given direction and feedback, and that's where they want. If you don't want to do the project, then what I would do is take it out. But, because we need to know which way we're going, because as Councilmember Durham alluded to, this project actually is going to be doing some things to improve the all-weather surfacing and flood prevention, if you will, or the impacts on that. But I also want to point out, you don't preclude things that haven't come up yet. So that's why I'm saying, if there's a community interest in X project, the process would be for them to raise it to your attention. You do the same thing you were starting today with a conversation, that if the council wants to send the dog park discussion back, it goes to P-RAC and starts. So I think, for the most part, there's a vehicle for which an unidentified potential project could still come forward and move through the process, potentially be funded yet this year, what the nuance of it may be, depending on the recommendation and research, or then would be in line to be funded next year. I do know that, for our purposes, because of the seasonal nature, we need to be working on the court improvements and all that before the rainy season, or we will lose a whole year on that project.
Yeah, I just want to also point out, we keep bringing up that one particular project, but I look at this also as, we built four bocce courts in town because of a grassroots interest, not only with visitors as a rental opportunity for us, but also because of our residents being interested in that recreational activity. And originally, there was a significant investment made to build those courts. Now it's a much less significant maintenance effort to help the club, which pays some of the costs of that. I see this in a very similar situation, where this particular project has gone through that public vetting, and has gone through our process as it's in place, and has come out with this recommendation from our advisory commission. So are we prepared to invest a significant amount of money into this recreational activity as we have done before, and then project some maintenance going forward? I'm comfortable with it. And looking at the entire budget, I'm not always a hundred percent satisfied with every single line item either. So there are some times, we just have to decide, in the interest of the greater good kind of thing, that we support it. Other thoughts?
Well.
Vice Mayor?
I have thought in the past, and I think I've brought it up at other budget meetings, that, you know, if there were, since we do have so many funds into which we allocate money each year, I, I really would, I would really like it if we did have a community projects fund that was strictly for parks and recreation for our, for our residents, that we allocate funds to each year. And so that when something did come up, we could draw on that fund, but also, it would demonstrate to the residents that we are thinking, you know, proactively about things that we can do to enhance the quality of life for them in this town and add more fun. I know that that's big on their minds right now.
Well, it is, but I think, you know, part of that challenge is how to bring it forward, because, for example, people said they wanted to keep the residents bash, and we've done that. I also point out that the capital projects fund is your primary funding source for most of your new capital projects. So you've paid for your park improvements, you've paid for the physical fitness equipment, you've paid for the pathway connections to get the bike path into Veterans Memorial Park. So you kind of, that, I guess what I would say, that is your community projects fund. What we may want to have, or you may want to think about, is, is how does the community initially start a dialogue of what there might be? Because we did a survey on park and recreation that had limit impact, and these were some of the things that came out of it. So I think maybe, Vice Mayor, what we want to do in the next year is maybe a survey of what are they interested in, get them started at the Park and Rec Advisory Commission process earlier, and that way, we have a little more feedback to see how they're doing, because we did use a survey to get, you know, what's out there. So I think that's a little bit of both.
Maybe it's a reminder that the Park and Rec Advisory Commission is there to hear people's ideas and, and to talk through them with staff and potentially bring them forward.
I also wanted to bring up that I have sort of a list of things that we do have done and do, and we've talked about having a one sheet that points these things out, like the, the update of the wall at the community center, and these are things, the hundred and fifty thousand that we spend on the pool and the vineyard park exercise equipment, everything sort of, you know, delineated, either on a page on our website or in some place that people can look at and say, oh, we are getting, you know, the town is, you know, thinking of us and wanting, our residents, this is for residents. Now, I, I love the businesses, too. We want to do what we can for them and work with the chamber, but for our residents, I really think that it would be helpful to have something delineated that they, and easy for them to see, rather than them having to look into the budget and then look in the programs and, I don't know, I just think that they, they're asking for it, as far as I hear.
I think they're asking for something. I don't know that they know what they're asking for. We are going to try, I mean, I hate to say it, that doesn't sound, but there's an expectation. And I think, you know, one of the first things I look at, our responsibility is to deliver a safe community. So we start with public safety, and we start with streets, we start with sidewalks. And we spend a lot of money on replacing and maintaining our pathways so that it's safe, it's walkable. And then what we're coming down to, so part of me says, we can do a better job of reminding, and we have talked about creating a residents' budget in brief, and then we can do maybe as a product that we're going to work with. So I think we'll take some of that. But I do think, like you were saying, it's also for some of our folks, if they don't use something, they don't see the value in it. And I've used the analysis of, you're in front of a vending machine, and you have two dollars, and you want to put, you know, you want this, this, and that, and you don't want to pay for the others. Because if somebody doesn't use the bocce ball court, they're not excited about any money you spend on the bocce ball court.
I do understand.
They want it over here. So it's just, but I think how to put a package together, and I do think, you know, it shouldn't surprise us, we've asked the community, and we're going to get some good input between the strategic planning process and the envisioned Yountville. And I think we need to look at people, there is a way for these processes to start. And I think we want to remind people of them and encourage their thoughtful consideration as they move through that process and where we're at.
Okay. Maria, Councilor Dorman?
How, from a process standpoint, do we do that? Because what makes all this go is the money, is the funds that we set aside and dedicate to that. So let's say that two months from now, we want to do fifty thousand to set aside as a community project fund. Do we have to do a budget amendment? I mean, how onerous is that? And, or should it be done now, since we're thinking of it?
Again, I'm going to say, part of this, Councilmember Dorman, it's a policy question on the part of, I'm not a big fan of you guys just putting an allocation out there and saying, go figure out how to spend it. Because what, right now, the projects that have come forward from Parks and Rec and the Arts Commission have always come with some level of a rationale or an interest. So I think part of that dialogue would be, how do you start with your joint commission meetings? Or if you have, you know, if you do want to start a program and say, well, we're going to put X dollars every year and have a community competition of sorts for it, you can do that. We could figure out what that might look like, but that would be something you all have to noodle on a bit more and give us some better policy guidance on what your intent is. Because right now, the Parks and Rec Commission focuses on maintenance and identifying interests and needs. They don't sit around saying, oh, we have to spend fifty thousand this year. There may be a year when there's no project because nothing has warranted that. So that's why I say, that one's an interesting catch-22 from me as a staff person to, what is it you're trying to achieve? And it'd be better, maybe, to do a community survey, which, again, we, we did, and that's what led to these couple moving forward, and then reassess what they're looking for.
So I'm, so I'm going to re- So I'm going to reiterate that previous councils have done what you're suggesting, and it has created confusion and frustration with the public, more than helpful. I use the Dog Park as an example. There was a direct expectation, a Dog Park was going to be built, because we had money allocated in reserve, kind of in the budget. And there was never a plan put forward to do that. So this would be kind of repeating what previous councils saw as not helpful. The process that did get to other projects that the town manager just alluded to has been effective. If anybody has an idea for an improvement, a service, a recreational program, all they have to do is contact the town, or as everyone knows, contact any one of us. We tell them how to go about moving forward. If it's a recreational opportunity, we advise them to go to our Park and Rec's department staff and our commission. And so I think that process is quite easy to follow and available, and if we need to do better jobs of messaging how to do that, I guess that's on all of us for messaging, or anybody that's coming to you with an idea, how do I get it moved forward? That's up to us to explain that process, I think.
So what if we took, let's say the pickleball court's going to cost $50,000. Could we, at this point in our budget process, take $50,000 and say, that's going to be for $100, $500 citizen projects, as Peter Kageyama expected, and let citizens, whether it's a business or a resident, I mean, I mean corporate and individual citizens, let them bring their $500 ideas to Parks and Rec, but have that money out there designated for that, to show we heard, and, because not everybody plays pickleball, not everybody plays bocce, I get that. We do a lot of big-ticket projects of which a lot of people are not able or not willing to take advantage. But the $500 project seemed to get some good feedback, so I just throw that out there.
Hold on. Vice Mayor, good question or comment?
Well, it was really my, going to be my last comment of the day, which was that when you began talking to town manager, you said that Maria was going to have good news for us at the end of this meeting about the, how the budget was looking in terms of the bottom line.
Well, I'm going to get to that question in a second. We're dealing, we're still dealing with the individual items within the budget, and then we could talk about the unallocated fund balance, which you don't know until we finish this conversation, what that number is. So we'll hold off on that and ask it in a second. Councilmember Mueller?
Well, I just want to address this question and just, my feeling is, I think these community conversations we've been having recently has got a lot of people interested and thinking and talking about stuff, but there's a lot of stuff that we've also talked about in the past that, you know, for example, undergrounding utilities. We've never, you know, it used to be always on our CIP project, we never really had enough money, we kind of put it aside. We've talked about town-wide Wi-Fi. So I want just to caution, don't get caught up in the thought de jour that's out there. I think, you know, if we really want to do some of these things, we need a more strategic approach to it, rather than, somebody brought this up and said this to, you know, if we really do have extra funds, and, you know, we're going to get our bottom line here in a minute, I mean, what are we really trying to accomplish for the betterment of the community? I mean, I think, you know, that a lot of people were pretty excited about Peter, he was very inspirational, but I think, you know, there's pros and cons to a lot of the comments that he made too, that really need to be vetted out a little bit amongst us. And, you know, I certainly, I'm not going to give up on underground utilities, because I think it's a safety issue. So if, you know, something comes back and we want to spend some money, you know, I think those things cannot fall off our list.
I agree.
And I would just say, I'm sure the Finance Director and Town Manager don't like to use the term "extra money."
Right.
I know that, but I'm just saying in jest, but before we start, back to your question about process, we certainly have mid-year adjustments that we would make. There is going to be a number that Maria is going to tally in the very near future on what our unallocated money is, and we decide how we are going to allocate those funds that have not been discussed in any of these budget line items yet. That could be as much as a million dollars, I think, is what you said.
That is, that is correct.
So there is some flexibility. I think you're still going to get some resistance, certainly from me and maybe from others, about putting that money out front before we have a reason to spend it. And it doesn't mean that that, that process of coming up with great, fun, inexpensive ideas can't move forward immediately, but to put the money out front, there is an expectation then that that money will be spent, even if there are 100 bad ideas presented, then. I worry about doing it in what I would say the opposite order, the reverse order from what I'd be comfortable with. Bring great ideas, and we have the ability to provide resources to make those things happen. We did it with the resident bash, we did it with the 50th anniversary, we put some money forward when we knew that that project was going to happen, but it was also after a long subcommittee that started to put the numbers together with the concept, and there was some more vetting to it.
And voila, I'm going to offer you an idea. I think, as you alluded to, when we get to the December-January time period, we will have an unassigned fund balance. So how you typically, you know, you've, council has chosen to add to either reserve funds, our targets, OPEB. So you are going to have some capacity at mid-year to make a course correction or adjustment. So that's the first thing. Perhaps, and I offer this because the mayor mentioned a subcommittee, if we are going to perhaps want to have a conversation about these $500 community conversations and project, maybe you need a working committee to organize and structure, how are you going to solicit the input, and then perhaps evaluate it. And I'm, I don't know, because you, you know, first of all, we make an assumption that they could all be Parks and Recs, some of these ideas may not be Parks and Rec. So if you did want to, and it's, again, this is a council policy determination, but if you were to want to do something in the next six months or a year around that, I think we need, we need a little better staff direction from how the council, you know, what might that look like and what is your interest? Because then you could have the solicitation of the input, evaluate it, and then perhaps make some recommendations based on that, as to what makes more sense for you to move forward with. Don't know, and maybe you use it to be ready for next year's budget. So I'm just saying, there's some thoughts, if you want to, you know, if your goal is to honor the conversation coming out of the discussion, then there may be some different vehicles with which to get started on that.
Maria, I'm going to ask you about that $900,000-plus liability that we have. And if we're talking about a ballpark figure of upwards of a million dollars in unallocated, what, I know you haven't necessarily crafted your strategy on what we do about that 900, but those numbers sound fairly similar. Can we even put money into drawing down that liability?
I would recommend, if you were going to do that, I would borrow against your drought reserve fund before I took general fund resources, because in the general fund, you've got the unfunded liability for PERS, and you've got your equipment replacement funds and all those other assets you need to take care of, or that I think the town needs to take care of. So I would, I would encourage that first. I mean, when you've got an enterprise fund, you have them set up for a reason so that they can operate sort of independently, and that drought reserve fund is a good place to go. And you could even set it up, no interest if you wanted to, to that capital fund and a loan, until it gets back up on its feet, but I like to keep general funds separate, if at all possible, just because I think it benefits the town better that way. Doesn't mean it's not on the table, I just wouldn't...
Right. But there is a way to kind of minimize what is kind of an ugly mark on the ledger, which isn't necessarily an ugly mark in the bank account.
I agree, yes, exactly. And there's multiple ways that we can do that. General fund, drought reserve fund, a loan, even a loan from the general fund, from the unassigned fund balance.
And rates? You could always jack them up.
Rates, I think, I think some of your rates do need to come up. You've been without a rate increase for two years, that alone merits it, and you've got to look a little bit, or we've got to look a little bit at the capital demands that this town has. We've got great infrastructure, we really need to be looking at what it's going to take to repair, maintain it, and replace it over time in water and wastewater, and I think that'll, that'll bring up the rates somewhat in wastewater, for sure, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional thoughts? Again, because this is kind of our final conversation about the budget with all five of us present. Okay? And we're at a decent hour this afternoon. So what, if any, further direction do you need from us?
Based on what you provided us, none.
Okay, good answer. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn to our next special meeting, which is May 30th at 9:00 a.m. for our next set of Envision Yountville applicant interviews, right here in the council chambers.
So moved?
Is there a second?
A second.
One favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.